All the meeting to order at six thirty please rise for the budget allegiance. Roll call please.
Trustee Peterson.
Present.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Present.
Trustee Bluthard.
Here.
Trustee Berman.
Here.
Trustee Domeniac.
Here.
Mayor Carter.
Present. We have two trustees attending remotely via Zoom this evening. Mayor report, couple items again today is Ash Wednesday, so you know, happy Ash Wednesday, but celebrate in the begin the Lent season. I also want to address something that has been weighing on my mind for the last couple of days or day and a half. And I see there's some public comments about this, about the increasingly brash car break-ins and potential of armed car break-ins in Antioch. We have had some discussions today with police department and staff about how we are going to approach these continued crimes in our community and how we can be more aggressive in preventing these crimes, which look at looking at our policing policies for this as well as different systems, camera systems, which I see as a topic. Not only the ones that have been raised before, but I believe the chief has been doing his due diligence with the state of Illinois. And there are companies that are favored by the state of Illinois that would also allow us to monitor the same camera systems as they have on the Illinois State tollway, which may be important to these situations. So it is not something that we have brushed under the rug and as it gets more and more aggressive, should be zero challenge to begin with. And I just hope that at some point, I said, Antioch is not the place for them to come and try and commit these crimes. So I just want to address that. And I know we have some citizens wishing to address the board. If you have not signed up, you wish to address the board, please do it now. Otherwise, let's trustee Berman to pass the list down. Oh, there's one more gentleman. Thank you. All right, I'll have Madam Clerk read the instructions for the public comment portion.
The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. Board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make best decisions for the village and public input is very helpful. Board must protect the civility and forum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and democratic process of your comments tonight. Please state your name and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous. The board requests that you not make statements that are professionally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. The extended committee members are addressing a similar issue. Mayor the Chair of the Committee, so does the wrong time of the board speakers. Or does not respond to comments or attempt any questions during the public conference.
All right, so if you're on Zoom, please put your phone or computer on you for the time being. There's some feedback in the room. All right.
First, we have Mark Turkowski.
Hey guys, yeah, you guys hearing?
Yep. I can do speaking with a microphone, so the trustee.
Yeah, thanks for addressing that, Scott. That's why I'm here actually. Maybe Sergeant can use an update too, but I came here in October, I believe, last year for cameras, license plate cameras. I asked the, at the last meeting, and I told it's going to get worse, but what happened in two days where we have a video of people's dogs like now trying to go to cars. And so I, you know, the status of that last meeting was that we were supposed to get updates of like what cameras I gave you guys solutions, I gave it a feasibility, give the police everyone the solution. Everyone's using the flock system, so I have the cost of other systems and solution that I don't know. But you know, my concern is, as my opinion, like the whole lack of car at nine o'clock, what about the people that are going up to their car at second or third shift or running to get medicine or whatever? And you run up against people like when you're driving, like with guns, like really, like you don't know what they're gonna do. You know, I said that it's gonna get worse six months ago, and here we still don't have the cameras, but yet the village has spent four hundred thousand in April. They spent 1.2 million dollars on water features at the park here, seven hundred thousand buildings, I mean, millions of dollars, and we can't, we can't get five thousand dollars for cameras. I mean, do it as a trial in New Haven, because that's where no one here lives in New Haven. You have to be sensitive to the subject that I'm, I'm the resident here of New Havens. There are multiple residents in New Haven, okay? They can't make it today, I talked to them. They had, they're out of town, they're at meetings, family, I could barely get here, everyone's busy. And I really need this to get moved along. I mean, we talk about this, the park and everything is resolved super fast, but we can't we can't resolve the camera issue fast, like it takes six months and we still don't have a decision and any kind of plan. I don't see any, I mean, Scott, he gave an update on high level, but I don't with systems, whenever they got to come in place, I mean, are we doing a trial, what's the, what's the plan here? So that's why I'm here. I mean, I just, I want to get this moving along faster. I don't want to wait another six months for the next brazen thing to happen. And I'm just more concerned about the people. Repeat your cars lock at nine o'clock, I'm concerned about the people going their driveway at nine o'clock. And then they have an attack tighter line at night, those people with guns on their driveway. I said the no cash bail is a big thing now, it's gonna get worse, it's gotta keep getting worse every single month. At a spring, it's gonna skyrocket even again. Every single spring, we get a spike over there every time. And it's gonna happen again, what's the next thing? So I don't, maybe I'll just put like, if there's any solutions, updates on the camera system or flock or.
Why don't we make the actual comment?
Yeah.
Comment or just?
And I'm willing to like help you guys out, like I said, like I'm here for a solution. Like, I'm not gonna come here with a problem, I'm gonna come to a solution for you guys to enact that. So I mean, I have, I have a list of people that want this in vain, so.
Thank you, Mark.
Evan Black.
All right, there we go. I'm on it now.
Good evening, Ward. My name is Evan Black, one of the residents in New Haven, here to also substantially substantiate some of Mark's concerns as well. So I'm a fairly new resident, moved here in fall of last year. Love Antioch, safe, family friendly in New Haven. So I was, I was worried when I, I saw that video online. The police had released it luckily, so we're kind of aware. But you know, like Mark was saying, solutions are are important. I think we're in a phase where we can be proactive, rather than, no one's been hurt, which is great. Due to my job, I, I am one of those people who are getting into my car kind of late at night sometimes due to being on call. So it would be beneficial to at least have some accountability, identify these people and maybe have some closure. Yeah, luckily no one's been hurt, residents, criminals perpetrators. But just due to the nature of the comments on Facebook, I can attest to the fact that some Antioch residents are not happy with this. If there isn't resolution, I think people are kind of on high alert, ready to defend what they have. And I'm not saying that's right, but it is, it's a dangerous circumstance. And I think that at minimum, maybe trial run of camera systems would be beneficial to do so. Thank you.
John Masalas.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the audience. I see a lot of familiar faces and we are going to address my primary topic a little later on in the whole of the committee as far as the Veterans Memorial. I am a transplant, I'm not a, an Illinois native, but when my family and I were looking to retire from the Army, Antioch was the place we came to. Out of all 50 states, out of 7,000 municipalities that kind of fit our criteria, this is where we landed. And that's because it fit our lifestyle, it fit our values. And part of that is honoring those who came before us and have paid the ultimate sacrifice. And to not have a Veterans Memorial on the engineer planning docket. As I reviewed the minutes, after hearing numerous comments by very selective officials to the contrary, I'm very interested to see where we go from here. As the junior vice commander at the VFW is a lifetime member of the American Legion, the VFW and the departments are, excuse me, disabled veterans. I've committed the rest of my life to our community. And see where we go from here. Thank you.
And thank you and thank you for your service. Just because it's a matter of public safety, it's because it's happened after the agenda was posted. We don't usually do much discussion after citizens addressing the board, but I just want to address a couple of matters and maybe the chief can as well. I would not be surprised if by next meeting, you don't see your revised policy as how police force is asking the board guidance on how to handle this type of situations if somebody is encountered in the midst of one of these robberies. And then I also want to put the words in chief's mouth, but he can address himself. He has a good different programs, including Flock, the one that was mentioned, and another one that's trust, which is more compatible with state systems, if I remember correctly. And we are also in the midst of the other aspect of this, which is budget season, which is something that we work through now till present the budget in March and see where that goes with that type of program. So is there anything I'm missing, chief, on that?
No. Let me address the camera.
Sure.
Yeah, just. So first, just want to say to the residents, we're keenly aware of your concerns. We're there with you, many of us live in the same community, our children go to the schools, wives, families, that's another thing. So we're in this together with you, trust me. My life is in this community, so I have just as best of interest to making sure that it is safe as you guys. I have a wife and five kids, so I understand. Keenly aware. In regards to flat mark to kind of answer your questions on the products, and they're all very similar technology. I know you work in the actual world, but the technology is all very similar amongst them. However, trying to identify what's going to be the best fit for our community is kind of what we really focused on. Flock is kind of, kind of the name in the game in this area. And I know, I know one of our, two of our neighborhoods actually have, have them on a, on a private basis through their HOAs. And several other Minneapolis around have enlisted the services of that company. Where we run into some kind of unique challenges is every, I shouldn't say every, most every gateway part of the city is a state route. You know, 173, 83, 59 are all state routes. In order to place a LPR camera in the eastman of that route, we have to have approval from Illinois Department of Transportation. For reasons that I'm not a hundred percent sure of, Flock is a company, and I dot are not, let's say, playing nice in the sandbox together. There's been some contractual challenges between them and the state. There's a process that vendors are asked to go to in order to grant it approval to be placed on a state right away. And Flock chose at the very inception of their emergence into this market here to not follow those. They ruffled some feathers at the state level. When we started talking with Flock, you know, they were, they pretended that, yes, we'll get you a permit. It takes about three to six months, we'll get your cameras up. During a conversation with a pretty high ranking official within the Illinois State Police, I was kind of surprised to learn that, yes, Flock has applied for hundreds of permits in the state of Illinois. However, I got, has not issued one. So there is not a lawfully placed block camera on a state route as of about three months ago anywhere in the state of Illinois. That doesn't mean that Miss Palace can't place them on local routes. But again, looking at kind of our geographical location, how the burglar's code works, we need something that can use on the state routes. That led us to a conversation with Motorola and their project vigilance, very similar. They're just as robust, probably has just as many customers on a national basis. They're, they're merging regionally, they secured the contract with Illinois State Police. They've been placed on Illinois tollway system primarily down in Chicago itself. But as of the end of the year, the state had placed an order for another 600 visual cameras to start blanketing from the state line all the way down to well south of the city. So it's going to be a very robust, integrated system. The cost is very comparable, but again, you know, to be, that's a policy decision by the board, by how comprehensive choose to go that route. So we're well aware of it, Mark, we're looking at the technology. We're not, we're not ignoring the concerns, we're considering all available options that we have. And it's just the best decision that we can for our community. It can decision of whether or not we feel it's going to benefit the community as a whole. I can tell you that conversations with other police chiefs that have since plate readers in their communities, they find them to be a very valuable resource. However, most of them are pretty quick to tell you that it's not good in itself result in a crime reduction. The type of crimes that we are seeing are unfortunately are being committed with stolen vehicles. Evidence is pointing to the fact, the ones that were engaged in the crimes in our community earlier this week were stolen out of a neighboring jurisdiction earlier that night had not even yet been reported stolen. So they would have just as easily been able to come into the community with these crimes undetected by an LPR. And certainly would have been a helpful investigative school after the fact, but you know, it's a good long horse resource, investigatory resource, but I don't want to fool anybody by giving a false sense of security that this is gonna stop.
And I saw you on the news briefly today, is there any tips for homeowners that can help you guys with camera systems? Whatever else may be.
Yeah, and then we, there's been some interesting in relation to our push for the nine AM routine and locking your doors. There were some, some comments, you know, victim blaming and victim shaming. Please understand that that's not the case, we're all human. We've all forgotten to lock our doors at some point. I've done it myself, you know, you walk out in the morning, get in your car here, you have that moment of a, I forgot to lock my car. So it's not about blaming anybody for these crimes happening, it's simply about educating the community that data, statistical data will tell you that almost all of these crimes are probable. If you lock your cars, move your belongings, valuables. Like, I can't say you're immune from crime, but statistically you can almost guarantee it's not gonna happen. They come, pull on the door, move on. I've been, I've been policing in this community for almost 25 years, I can probably count on one hand the number of forceful entries we've had, it would be a full effect.
And please keep your re notification on, because I think most of these, we get the videos the next day. So because people don't have a notification if somebody's at their door lurking around there.
Yes, 100%. Most of these aren't worth discovering until the, until well into the next one.
All right, thank you. All right, on to the regular business agenda. First item is the consent agenda, is there any request to remove either of those items in the consent agenda? If not, roll call please. Oh, the motion is second, I'm sorry.
Approve the consent agenda.
Motion trustee Pierce, second trustee Bluthard, roll call please.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Domeniac?
Yeah.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, regular business is consideration of approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of 1,784,105.21 to have a motion in the second.
So move.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Your honor, I would ask if we reverse the order of these?
Yeah.
Because item three contains things that are going to be approved in item four.
Okay, trustee Pearson, we withdraw your.
I will withdraw my motion.
All right, so I have to request that trustee Pierce, we will go to item number four. We have a.
Excuse me, I'm gonna read.
Oh.
Leave the room.
Perfect, we are gonna go to item number four and go back to item three in a moment. So item number four is consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing the purchase or acquisition of certain real property located within the village of Antioch, Lake County, Illinois. Ordinance number 23 dash 02 dash 04 to have a motion in the second waving the second.
So move, waving the second.
Motion trustee Bluthard. Second trustee Pierce. Discussion on this item, I don't see anybody on, I mean, I can't see the cameras on Zoom, so I'll start with trustee Pierce. I'll just go down the line and see if anyone has comments. So trustee Pierce, can we have an explanation from the attorney of what the exact purchases are, since we don't have the village administrator on line?
Sure.
Yeah, I think he is, but yes.
Yeah, of course, that is the, what's commonly referred to as the Peterson property, it's two parcels of real estate. And it is the 59 and 173.
It's the property that, yeah, from south of Antioch Pizza to Heron Harbor, a bus to the water that parcel property that connects Heron Harbor and the bike path part to downtown and another parcel that is adjacent or continuous with Peterson Park on 173.
And did we satisfy all the the requirements?
Yes.
I know last, last meeting there was a issue.
We have satisfied all legal requirements to be able to go forward with this.
Okay. All I have here on. All right, trustee Mason.
Oh, this is, this is a big deal, good stuff for Heron Harbor. This is long over, overdoing to get the kids off 59 and able to get a park used for, for the kids at Heron Harbor. So the next step would be usable trails over to Peterson Park. So this is, this is a big step moving, moving forward.
And to that, to that point, the village has been waiting for $600,000 from the state of Illinois for three years, four years, five years.
Right.
Specifically for that, would be specifically for a trail area or a connection to the downtown of Heron Harbor. So just for the record, we are still waiting for that. It will continue to talk to our state representatives about that check. I'm out of work, so we have trustee Peterson recuse yourself, trustee Bluthard.
No comment.
Trustee Berman.
No comment.
Trustee Domeniac.
I have no comment specifically on the acquisition of the property. I do request that as we start planning what we're going to do with that property, we give consideration to the fact that we're going to allow golf carts to cross over on 59. And also to consider putting sidewalks in on the property there in that triangle. My husband and I took the opportunity when it was nice out to try and walk up to the ace from our subdivision, which also doesn't have a park. And the people driving, you have to walk on the street and the people are driving obviously much faster than 25 miles an hour, they run the stop signs there all the time. And I'm certainly not suggesting we should plant a police officer there 24/7. But it is dangerous and the kids in our neighborhood really have no access to getting in to town, nor do the adults that want to walk. So if we could just, as we're planning what we're going to do over on that other side of 59, we think about what we could do on the east side of 59 for the many people that live in both Landmark Point and Mystic Cove. And I'd like it to be put in the record, thank you.
I'm sure everyone will miss all the political signs of that property. So. All right, any other discussion on this matter? Otherwise, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Domeniac?
Yes.
Five voting yes, one recusal, motion carries. Was that, yeah, me and Perry Peterson. Oh. You know what? There need to be, just, you could just recuse yourself or abstain from going on the payables, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, back to item number three, consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of 1,784,105.21. Do I have a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion trustee Pierce.
Second.
Second trustee Bluthard, any discussion regarding this item?
Can we get an explanation of why it's big? Sure, I mean, I don't want people to think we just paid 1.7 million dollars for that piece of property down there.
If the administrator's not, to the large acquisitions of real property are on this agenda, then I will turn it over to the village administrator who is.
Good evening, I gotta switch screens here real quick. So there were some larger items on this AP. One of which is a, looks like a wire transfer for 1.15292904. And that was purchase of the Centegra building. And there's also a wire transfer in the amount to 195,12854 for the purchase of the, the parcel on 59 and 173.
Any other discussion, trustees? All right, roll call please.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Stay.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Domeniac?
Yes.
Five voting yes, one abstention motion carries.
Your honor, point of order, this is for the attorney, should she change her vote from abstaining to recuse?
Yes, there's no recuse at will. It's not, it's not recognizing her, which was for her abstinence, it's fine.
Okay.
So she vote no, but her abstinence is then.
All right, do we have anything for the administrators' report?
Nothing to report, your honor.
Okay, village clerk. Any trustee reports of those contained in the written report?
I just want to remind everybody.
Go ahead, I'll wait.
I'll go around, yeah. I just want to remind everybody tonight, public works is out working, trying to salt roads, cutting trees up, clearing, clearing branches that are falling on the roadways. Please be safe and watch them out there and, and give them room to do their job and understand the type of precipitation we're getting, that it's harder to clear the roads than just a snowstorm. Because the rain washes it away, then the ice freezes it up.
Thank you, Benaya. Thank you to our first responders working overtime, and I saw many vehicles out already, so. All right, anybody else before trustee Domeniac? All right, trustee Domeniac.
Yeah, yeah, just wanted to let everybody know that I attended the District 34 meeting last night. They approved their, they approved their 2023 to 2028 strategic plan. Next week is D34 week, and I think Mayor Gardner, you're going to be involved in that, judging part of the activities. The mayor also sent off a letter to I dot requesting approval to work with us on improving the crosswalk on Main Street. I had brought this forward before in for a sample, an example of what we want is what you see at Rich, in Richmond. If you go to Pisonos or any of the restaurants there where solar powered, push a button and it starts to flash. So be, if we can get I dot to move forward on that, that'll be a big improvement for the public safety crossing that what do you call it, making that crossing, sorry. And then lastly, March 4th is Sequoia Pride event at the VFW for anybody who wants to help them raise funds for the kids. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting?
Almost.
Motion trustee Mason.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Domeniac?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Six voting yes, motion carries, um being adjourned seven oh three, we'll take a five-minute recess and we can meet about seven-tenth.
Sorry, I was at the hospital. It is. My one-month checkup. After my back.
Yeah, I got it. But thanks. Thank for that, Dave, I appreciate it. They're not bad, so they've got their options. Well, they've got three different products, you know, squad. Okay, when they call it portable, which is kind of. Yeah. And they've got what they call permanent power, so it's hard wired and those are very expensive, but the uh portable ones, which is. Yeah. Yeah. They're about three thousand. Yeah. Well, then John, I think the real. Got the race. It's a G. Yeah. I missed. Right. Or I see. And next. Showed one with the costume. If I hang, well, there's no kind of. Why not? I say morning. So where is it? They go. He well. They always. They started. Forty-five. The cornerstone. Yeah. That's not. Oh, they didn't see how those people, they don't, they don't. Well, there's lots of like. They always. It's not. They think it's a picture. Well, it's all citizens' security. I see. Well, I think it's like. Yeah. I can't see shit on my face. Of course, of course, the one I go to the side of my house, I can see every car that goes to stop, like every day. I'm very. That I can tell you about. Yeah. I thought you. Well, can't your old. Yeah. Everything, it's good. A lot of people. Oh, my, my, my. And it's a person right next to him. And yeah. Thanks for the update. I may. Oak tree fell down. Yeah, they're everywhere. After you see a wild dispatch earlier, that one over by Highland uh Tiffany Court, Highland Church right there, that big tree. I was driving by and it bowed over and you could see the the bushes next to the house lift up. The entire root base was was.
Because they planted cheap Japanese elms in there and the Japanese elms are collapsing. I've had like five or six branches.
Yeah, but there's the oak tree, no, there's. There's an oak tree down now, black. Then we lost, then we lost. Well, maybe I should go see if it's still alive. Trustee Mason, Dominiac, you're still there?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Alright. Call the uh committee of the hall meeting to her at seven twelve, roll call, please.
President. Trustee Mason. Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Hudson.
Trustee Bluthard.
Here.
Trustee Berman.
Here.
Trustee Dominiac.
Here.
Mayor.
Present, uh two trustees attending remotely. Uh first item on the agenda is the approval of the February eighth, twenty-twenty-three committee of the hall meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a motion and a second?
Oh, come on.
Second. Motion trustee Mason, second trustee Peterson, roll call, please.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes.
Dominique.
Yes.
Uh six voting yes, motion carries. First item on the regular business um is discussion regarding the future downtown park property located at Main and Depot. Um administrator Kime um is on Zoom. Do you have any update that you'd like to discuss on that, Mr. Kime?
Uh yes, thank you, your honor. Um we don't have any um, you know, visuals or anything to share with the board tonight. I know the architectural team is doing further refinements on the uh building design. Uh so that's in process, and I know we're working on getting some three-D renderings to put that building in context uh with the buildings that surround this area. Um so I I hope to have that um, you know, i- in the next few weeks, hopefully by the next meeting. Um so the the rest of the design team is finalizing in a bid packages. We're hoping to have the bid packages finalized um in March for, you know, right now they're they're scheduling an advertisement for a bid on April twentieth. Um there is some required uh notice periods. My bid package has to go to stormwater management for a minimum of ten days, you know, prior to its bid, you know, for their review. Uh so there's some procedural things that need to happen, but but right now uh the main effort is to complete uh bidding documents, construction drawings. And um I know we're in for permit and and with several agencies right now and um we're just trying to try to keep the project moving and uh we're scheduled right now, hopefully, for a a letting or a bid award, uh second meeting of May. Um and hopefully, construction would begin shortly thereafter, so that's that's what we're shooting for.
Alright, thank you. Um any questions, any comments of the board, anything on address?
Did he? But did he say approximately, he said the bid letting in the second meeting of May? How's, how, how much time in between putting the bids out and uh awarding the bids only takes place?
So it's a, it's gonna be a very large bid package, it's a complex project with with all these different elements. So, you know, we're thinking right now, we're going to give um contractors and prospective bidders about a month to um, you know, dive into the the construction documents and and get comfortable with them and align their subs and start sourcing materials and pricing. So we're thinking about a month, it'll be um out on the street for bid. So we'll be collecting, you know, bids um sometime maybe mid mid-May and then hopefully we can arrive in an award in time for the second meeting of May.
Okay. And and the only other thing I want to say, your honor, is uh trustee Mason keeps stressing how we we can't call this the bidder property or the village green or anything of that nature. And I I tend to agree with him. I also uh feel that we can't necessarily call the whole piece of property a park. There is a park incorporated in it, but it is more of a redevelopment. We're spending eleven million dollars there approximately. It's a redevelopment corridor, we're redeveloping all of downtown and changing our city center. So I I think we need to talk about this, is how we're re- redeveloping this and transforming this, not just we're building a park.
I I I agree with trustee Pierce that two years ago, when we started this project under Mayor Hanson, that uh I said we should memorialize the people that made Antioch and gave our freedom to vets and the first responders. I basically said, great name would be Memorial Park. I said you could run with it or find a better name. We ran away from serving our vets with this park. We wanna put a, you know, uh you know, other thoughts and ideas where put a twenty-foot area where that tank is and say that's a vet when we go to other communities where they build walls and they have the people that sacrificed everything. Uh my father is uh on the wall over at Lindenhurst uh where he's got a Purple Heart. Um Antioch, they got nothing. So uh it 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 it's a shame that we've got people with lost limbs, PTSD. Um people that served uh during wartime, um people that served um first responders, fifty years, I'll just use uh Denny Voling as as an example um that made Antioch what it is. Um and and how do you those type, how do you forget those people? And 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 spend the um eleven million, twelve million dollars, whatever this park cost is, and forget these great people that gave us their freedom and gave, you know, you wanna call rescue squad, a fire department, gave services for free for fifty years. So I mean, you 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 have to consider these folks, these are great people, these are honorable people. Everyone that served in the capacity of serving our country, serving the community. So I said it two years ago. I I was pretty much looked over, but now it's come to fruition, so here we're at.
And thank you, anybody else? Questions, comments? Alright.
Yeah, I mean, is there anybody else that's before me?
Oh, good, trustee Dominiac.
Um, yeah, my question, it has to do with what you just shared with us, which is um uh regarding the bidding process, is there any way to accelerate that? Is there any way to do like a, I edit, you know, not being involved in the bidding process um in terms of how to execute on that, but to like do a a pre-bid announcement so that people know it's coming? Um, you know, are there ways to accelerate it?
It's a great question. Um so we have uh made many of the contractors in the area aware. Um we've been checking in with contractors as the design team moves some of these uh features along and designs along and and tries to come up with things that are constructible, they've been in touch with the contracting community. Um so yeah, there are, there, it has been an effort to make the uh likely bidding community aware of this project, and I think it is, um it is gonna draw some pretty good interest. Um you you know, and until we, to do a fair bidding process, you have to release the information, you know, to everybody fairly at the same time. Um, you know, I'm not a, I'm not aware of a way, I mean, we could give the bidders two weeks to bid, but that might be shooting ourselves in the foot because we might not get very good bids if they don't have enough information to put solid number, they they'll throw a high number down on the page, you know, so.
Yeah.
So, you know.
And I wasn't thinking to short, I wasn't thinking of shortening the time that they have, I just wondered if there was a way to get it out there sooner.
You know, the, we're gonna, we're gonna do as much as we possibly can barring any um, you know, delays. Um you you know, the the more we would, you know, consider other elements or um, you know, if we don't come to a consensus on what the building looks like, um, you know, it's it's, that's really kind of, I think, one of the limiting factors here is when we go out to bid, is how quickly can the building get um completely detailed and put into construction documents? Um but, you know, I post.
Oh, thank you for, thanks for considering the question, I just, you know, and I'm sure that you're looking at trying to figure out how to make this go correctly, but as quickly as possible, so thank you.
Yeah, the the mayor asked for a similar thing, and I did put a a question out to the group for, you know, and any way to expedite this, but at this point, I I I think that that what I'm being told is that that's the schedule that they can actually perform under.
Thank you.
Trustee Berman.
That's upon you, your honor.
You.
Um, I I think that we need to slow down a bit. I know, but this whole project, it's just, we gotta keep going, keep going, keep pushing forward, keep pushing forward. Um and I think that we need to slow down a bit and we need to reevaluate and prioritize some things. Um, you know, government that runs on autopilot is bound to crash and burn. And I think that uh. Um, you know, government that runs on autopilot is bound to crash and burn, and I think that uh we could be heading that way if we don't slow down a little bit. Um, I don't feel that there are uh certain things that are being considered and um, it's just going way too fast. So that's all I want to say about it.
Any other comments? Alright, um, thank you, Mr. Kind. Um, hopefully next week we'll be looking at uh potential final kinds that's uh in the making from the architects. Okay? Alright, um, next item on the regular business is township supervisor, um Tom Shaughnessy discussing discussion regarding the Osmond Fitness Park. Welcome.
Thank you. Good. Thanks for letting me come on here and talk to you. Um, last week, uh, we met with our board uh to present this idea. This uh this idea is a outdoor fitness facility, fitness court is called, national fitness campaign. We're together with Blue Cross Blue Shield to make these offerings of uh add some grant money out there. This thi- this project costs a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars totally. Uh, we applied for a grant. We got a grant of fifty thousand dollars given to us at the other part of December. Uh, I know we're springing this on everybody really quickly. It's been a couple of months, but I know you're going into your budget season. We're going into ours as well. So the two cornerstones of getting this uh this outdoor fitness court up is the the township and the village. You can't get the village and township on board. There's no reason to go out and ask for other people to to help support the idea. So we're asking you guys to support it. Uh, and I will be asking our our boards already said they would. It's just a matter of how much. Uh, let me give you a little bit more background on the the national fitness campaign. Uh, it is the answer sponsored by Blue Cross Blue Shield. They were offering thirty thousand dollar grants and fifty thousand dollar grants. We applied for it as soon as we heard about it. Uh, they did award us a grant, but they wanted a commitment immediately. And I said, we can't get a commitment out of government in 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 a couple of weeks. It's gonna take at least a couple of months to get an answer. So I said, okay, we're gonna give you the grant for fifty thousand dollars. How soon can you make a commitment? I stood, I put a date out there, March fifteenth. So we're trying to get a commitment from the major cornerstone, major players in our community, um village and townships I mentioned, we've gone to Raymond Chevrolet. Seems like everybody goes to Raymond Chevrolet for that. So Raymond Chevrolet, we went to the Lions Club, we went to Rotary Club. I've got a list of sixty other people that we can go to to ask for different donations. The the idea here is uh it's a thirty to thirty, thirty-eight foot by thirty-eight foot concrete, concrete, concrete pad that has a hundred and eighteen different apparatuses on it. Twenty-eight people can exercise on it at one time. Uh, it has a wrap on the inside and outside. If you look at the 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 paperwork I handed out to you, you can see the 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 different sponsorship levels. We had a hundred dollars to five thousand. We had the ten thousand, twenty-five, we can try open township and the village and the other three major players land in that category. You look at the outside of the wall there, you can have the major sponsors. There's four or five major sponsors there. That's a graffiti, um repeated protected covering of some sort. I don't know how they do that, but um the that, so that's the outside of the wall. On the, on the one that shows you an inside, it shows the hundred dollar, five thousand dollar donation. You can see where they have the other sponsors, lower quality, lower quantity sponsors. And that's where we get into after we get the commitment from the five major players. Uh, we'll figure out how much we have to get from other sponsors, and their names can go on that wall on the inside wall. That's called the engagement wall. Uh, the outside wall is a, is a one of a kind artwork possibility. Um, they've shown, I I will say, you're gonna get a chance to send this to you guys electronically. I'll send it to Lori uh tomorrow morning. And there's a two-hour, a two-hour, two-minute video that shows, that shows you what this is all about. Give you a little bit more detail. Um. So right now, what we're doing is the fifty, we go out in Osmond Park and go to the east side of where the exercise facility is now. So the backside will be facing to the west. That's where the sponsors' names would be facing towards the parking lot and towards the the swing set area. The exercise equipment itself would be on the east side of that wall. So that is basically what we're asking for is for you guys to consider it. And uh, if these make a commitment by your next board meeting, uh, we have to have a commitment to the national fitness campaign by March fifteenth. And we both have our board meetings on March eighth, so hopefully that would be, so if there are any questions, I'm rambling a little bit there, but I just want to make it out there for you.
I'll start with trustee Pierce.
But you kind of skipped over the, what? But you kind of skipped over the not one of them.
Well, they did. The amount I want in the front would be a hundred and five thousand dollars if you really want to put the whole thing up for a big one. I don't, actually, yeah, you're right. But say, no, we actually look at the second one. But by the, it's ten thousand, twenty-five thousand what we're looking for. If we can get five guys to give up and twenty grand a piece, we got the hundred thousand, we're gonna have to go through sixty-five other people to to put up in sponsorship. So ideally, it'd be a case of five of us giving them twenty grand a piece. Uh, but Lily Baseball and Viking Football are on board with supporting it. They just don't know how much they are gonna be able to have. It depends on how much we gather ourselves, how we have to go out and ask for the people. And we haven't gone out to those people yet, but we will once we get the commitment from the five cornerstones. Then we know that we can go out and give them the purchase order and get the get the the project started. We have until the end of twenty twenty-three to be able to put up a park. It will only take us a couple, not even a couple of weeks. So anywhere from ten to twenty-five thousand, I would love to have. More towards the twenty.
Um, I saw there was, um, I looked online, there are a couple of towns, maybe Forest Park or a couple of towns that have um these centers. Um. Have you talked to them or have you seen like obviously how they're held up or like how often that they're getting used? Have you talked to anyone? Have you seen any of those other ones that actually? Yeah, I have not reached out to any of those individually. I have talked to the people that are sponsoring the program. They're up in California.
Rowan McKenzie's, anyway, she's, I asked her, is it ADA compliant? Yes, it is. It's ADA compliant. Um, is it uh also the 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 weathering of the equipment, it's outdoor, it's outdoor equipment, so it's designed to be outdoors. A lot of the people that are endorsing people from Michigan, Michigan has a lot of these outdoor facilities, uh and they swear by it. I mean, and the number of people that use it, I I can't get more than that.
Or I forget to like a couple of weeks ago or a month ago, when Fisher Paper, they're looking at all these projects. Put that on your list.
Okay, alright. It's those type of things. Once we, once we know that we're gonna go forward with the project, then we can come up with trying to make sure. Thanks in that. There's just a couple of ideas kicking around. We could do fine arts. We can do without fine arts. We can do the high school, you know, the finance people are that we can change the wrap on this book, on this wall every other year or so and do some local artist activity or all uh all uh autism work that the local.
So I, I will say also, just for the record, that we did get in our packet um late or later um a favorable recommendation from the parks board um chairperson regarding this. So I know that, just I want to make sure the board knows that if they didn't see that, it came in a little later, but alright, um.
One of the things I want to throw out to you, you want to turn your back on fifty thousand dollars. If you tell them no March fifteenth, we're not gonna get it back. So, sure. Just so that's, you know, we got fifty grand in our pocket right now. Like to be able to use it wisely.
Um, trustee Mason would be next. If he has any questions about this, is on Zoom.
I have no questions for Mr. Tom.
Alright, uh trustee Pierce.
I don't have any questions. I went to read about this in investigative article. It sounds, it sounds very interesting.
Trustee Luther.
Um, kind of tying in with, the mayor asked, what do you envision the maintenance cost and who's responsible for that moving forward on this?
The way they described it in the, the maintenance should be almost nil. Uh, you're gonna have vandalism, obviously, that you have in the park. I don't know what that level of vandalism will be. Uh, but the way the, the, once you see the video and you see the equipment out there, it's substantially, it's substantial steel and concrete. There's not a lot that anybody's gonna be able to do to it, at least that I can see.
And and.
I don't know if you and I will be able to jump up on the flash here.
Uh, I don't see, I saw a lot of work on this at this time, but um uh more a technical question, but or or you can just, insurance-wise, if someone was to get hurt on this, who's responsible for that?
I think it's the same insurance, insurance coverage that we have in all of our parks.
And that's all I have at this time. Oh, wait, I don't worry. When would the money be required? You're asking for a commitment. When would the money be needed?
The, once we get to commit before anybody, by March fifteenth, I will tell them, I'll issue them a purchase order. They will then say, when are you gonna send us the check? Fifty thousand to ensure that you're gonna take the equipment. And then I will tell them that if I do that a week, I'll send them a check for fifty thousand out of the township, and then we'll collect the underwriting from everybody else.
Nothing, right? Trustee Berman.
Um, I don't have any questions or comments at this time. I'd like to look, yeah, dive deeper into this, so.
Um, trustee Dominion.
Yeah, I have, I uh, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing because of some echoing, but what did you say uh to uh supervisor Shaughnessy would, is your request from the village in terms of um the dollar amount?
Any amount from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, but if you really want, you have thick pockets, you can put the whole hundred thousand.
Well, I know I I wouldn't vote for that. Um, I guess the question is, you know, it, when do we have to get, I would want to know um how this fits in our spending right now. I mean, we're spending a lot of money, and I think this is a great idea, as I shared with you. Um, I think it's very interesting, but I also said that, you know, it it, we have to look at our budget because there's so many big projects. So I think if we're gonna talk about this at the next board meeting on March eighth, I would like request that the administrator show us how we would pay for this um and how it fits with every other project that we are spending money on. So that would be one thing. I also um had a question for you, supervisor Shaughnessy. Do you have cameras in in Osmond Park?
Yes, we do.
So would there be a need for can, uh camera installation by, I I think there should be cameras by this if it is put in. Is that area already under camera?
Yes, there's a, there's an easy way to add, add another camera to be on the other side of that wall so we can, we can see what's going on. We've got uh right now.
So that would, that would be, that would be a cost that would be incurred by the township. I guess my question is, you know, you mentioned that there's not a lot of maintenance. I I don't, you know, there's always maintenance, number one. Number two is security because uh your comment about vandalism, I'd want to make sure that we have sufficient camera over there so that um, you know, considering what we were talking about earlier and what's going on in our community, that we would be able to record any shenanigans over there. So um, I guess I would need to have a couple answers about those ques- to those questions, along with from our village administrator, how this affects the money that we're spending on all the other um projects that we have.
I can address the security cameras. We have, I think there's twelve cameras out there now. Uh, we uh we used Asli grant money to put those cameras up. Um, so that was spent out of a a park fund through a a open space land and development grant that we got back in nineteen, nine, uh twenty years ago, two thousand and three.
Okay, so you, so you'd be able to come back to us and and verify that there there would not be any need, that there is adequate secure, security cameras there and that we, nothing would have to be installed at the cost of the village.
Yeah, exactly. There's no problem. Right now, the cameras already have access, the fire department has access, the village has access, the police have, police have access to the cameras that are out there. We've been able to uh to find some vandals, up or five of them that have done damage out there to the facility. It within a day or two, I think we found them. So uh, yeah, there's, there won't be any problem with that. The camera, to add another camera is relatively inexpensive.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's what I would like to see, that there's security cameras, and then um from our village trustee, how this all fits in our budget that we're spending all our dollars, or the projects that we're spending all our dollars on. So that's all I have, your honor.
Thank you. Um, supervisor Tom Shaughnessy, um, one other, or maybe two other requests. Before the next meeting, can you, you know, it's a spreadsheet or whatever, give us, if you do have any commitments, let us know, like, who you have on board, so we know what the what the commitments are at that point. If there, if Lions Clubs and Freedom, hypothetically a thousand, we can see where the funding is at, so we have an idea that there's fifty thousand left to make this happen, or ten thousand left.
I I understand the question and the two linchpins, the village and the township. One, if we decide what we're gonna give, sure, we can figure out how much to ask for other people. And I can't, well, I I I'd love to be able to go to Raymond and say, I only need five thousand. As opposed to, can you come up with a hundred thousand? Sure. Um, so the answer to your question is, we're the ones that are gonna decide what everybody else is gonna be asking.
Okay.
If we, if we both put in fifty, uh twenty-five thousand dollars into this project, that's fifty grand, all we have to do is come up with another fifty. And we'd probably be able to do that with Lions Club, Rotary Club, and Raymond.
Um, the other question I had, this is, this only came up in my mind because I recently was asked by somebody, a resident. Do we have any uh AED devices in that park or any parks?
Yes, I asked about the same thing. I think you and I might have had a conversation about it too, if it's one of the areas we were at. The Viking football had two of them, baseball has one of them. Viking football takes theirs back after every weekend and brings it back to somebody's house. It doesn't really help anyway. If it's inside a concession stand, nobody can get to it. Uh, we've asked about outdoor available AEDs. Uh, I haven't gotten very good response to that. People said basically they steal them right away. Well, I don't know if there's outside facilities that can, that we can purchase and put out there, but we definitely should have something that only can get access to to save some of these lives. Thank you.
Your honor.
Yeah. Trustee Dominion.
Yeah, um, I don't know if anybody else has anything you want to say. I'm kind of at the end here. I don't want to step in front of anybody.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, I think um, what might be another approach, rather than say, I'd rather go to Raymond and say five thousand, maybe we think about, we would do a match or something, and that might encourage people because personally, I'd rather we get the money elsewhere and let the village spend the money on some of the projects that we have. But again, my opinion and something to think about, maybe it's a matching program.
I will sit down uh with supervisor and administrator time and um come up with some more details too on how we approach this. Okay, thank you. I think, you know, there's needs to be support for this. Um, alright. Next item, thank you, uh Mr. Shaughnessy. Next item is the veterans memorial committee. Um, I know we have a couple of individuals here, and um not to steal any thunder here, just kind of like a little background so people know how this, you know, came to be. Um, obviously, when I was elected in twenty twenty-one, I met with a couple of the individuals here about a veterans memorial, which I definitely support. Um, I know we have um, a couple areas in town that are related to veterans, but not what I would consider a veterans memorial. Um, during that timeframe, I had some ideas in my head. Um, obviously, as the park project moved along, um, the veterans committee wasn't necessarily in the day-to-day discussions, as well as the parks board, which in retrospect, um, in hindsight, seems to have been an error. Um, but I want to make sure that whatever we do, we are committed to having a um a respectful and rememberable uh veterans memorial, um whether that ends up being something that the board decide goes into the park, whether that goes on a parcel right near there, whether it goes in something, you know, even when we acquired this property at fifty-nine, if we make a memorial looking wall, whatever we decide, um, I want to make sure this happens so they're not um feeling like this is not our priority. It's been going on for ten years, if I look back at the notes correctly. Um, as decide, I had gone ahead and spoken to um some contractor groups, which uh donated time and money to getting a son at the Waukegan Airport. And they have indicated their support for something like this, as well as a police memorial to get there. Um, so I want us to hear, again, I can, I understand the frustration from the group that has been behind this for ten years. Um, it wasn't intentional. Um, I want, you know, at least it wasn't by me, and I'm assuming Mr. Kind and the boards before us, um, but I want us to come out of here tonight with a plan of action that is something we talk about, what we envisioned for, something that's gonna be memorable and not something that we're just, um, you know, doing as a, as a part of something, but to be a centerpiece or something, if that makes sense. So, uh, with that being said, I believe um was, under your Ms., under your, we take the lead. All right. And then I know there's a couple other veterans interested parties here. Um, so thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Uh, good evening, Mayor and trustees. I'm Debbie Gardner. Along with Paul Haddock, we represent the Antioch Veterans Memorial Committee. We also have here with us tonight Jay Jawswiak, the, um, Antioch American Legion leader. Last Thursday, February sixteenth, uh, myself, Paul, and Jay met with Mayor and Administrator Kime to discuss the possibility of including a veterans memorial in the park at, um, Main Depot. During that meeting, Mayor Gardner requested that we come tonight to discuss our plans with the board. So a little background, in twenty twelve, I approached then Mayor Hanson and Administrator Kime about building a veterans memorial in Antioch. At that time, I was a one-woman committee. Over the next several years, I continued discussions with Mayor Hanson and Administrator Kime. We discussed possible locations for the memorial. I expressed my desire to build the memorial on the property that at one time was the Kennedy Garden. Administrator Kime informed me that there was a plan for a three-story structure on the, what was the picnic property, and would basically block the memorial. The property by the wetlands was then suggested. I spent years researching and speaking with individuals with experience with the process to include going with trustee Peterson to meet with the mayor of Lindenhurst to learn the process, um, from start to finish, what they did with the Lindenhurst Memorial. I met Paul Haddock in two thousand and four, when he returned from his first deployment to Iraq. And throughout the next ten years, we worked together on different projects for veterans and care packages, fundraising, and so on and so forth. In twenty fourteen, I asked Paul if he would like to be a member of the committee, and we then became a two-person committee. In twenty fifteen, we took our plans to Sean Robey, who was then the director of Parks and Rec Antioch. We discussed our ideas and plans, and he immediately supported us. Over the next several months, myself, Paul, and Sean met to discuss plans and progress. In early twenty sixteen, myself, Sean Robey, Mayor Hanson, and Administrator Kime walked the wetlands property. The property, the, the, the village owns that strip of land right in front of the wetlands, if y'all know what I'm talking about, uh, uh, orchard over there. All right, we walked that property. Um, at the time, Administrator Kime stated that soil borings would need to be done. It was agreed that he would get them done. On June sixth, twenty sixteen, I contacted Sean Robey about the soil samples. He spoke with Administrator Kime, who stated that he was working on other items, so he hadn't ordered the borings. On September fourteenth, twenty sixteen, I addressed the cow, requesting permission to build a veterans memorial on village property. Board members at the time were Maisig, Polus, Jawswiak, Dominik, Gears, and Johnson. No objections were raised, and all trustees agreed to have staff test the soil. October eighteenth, twenty sixteen, I contacted Sean Robey about the soil samples. He responded that he had no word on the soil samples. On November twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen, I contacted Sean Robey about some soil samples. He stated that he had spoke with Administrator Kime, who stated that the soil samples were too expensive and would not be done. In May twenty seventeen, I spoke with Mayor Hanson, who asked me the status of the memorial. I informed him that I was told the soil samples were too expensive and wouldn't be done. He replied that the project is going to be held up for then. I'll check with Jim and give that to you. I never heard back. At the meeting last Thursday, that I referenced in the beginning, I learned that the soil samples were never done. Soil samples that the twenty sixteen village board directed staff to do.
Debbie, thank you. I look forward to continuing this part of the presentation. Mayor, thank you for your kind words. We truly appreciate them. Appreciate your time here this evening, as well as with the board. And the package you have in front of you, the first thing is basically an agenda that Debbie already started, followed by that were the approved minutes that Debbie just talked about. The next thing you will see is this handout right here. This handout is from the Lake County Veterans Assistance Commission, the commission where I serve as a trustee on the executive board. This document here is just a partial document that shows approximately twenty-four of the veterans memorials in Lake County. There's been some discussion, there's some concern, that perhaps we, the two of us, aren't prepared.
Paul, did you put this in front of each person?
It's in a single pack. There might be an extra one down there if you would, who does not have it? Astein Peterson? Okay, thank you.
We have extras if anyone else needs.
All right. I'll continue. Um, let me just start over then, since you just got the packet. The very first part of the packet was this agenda, followed by the minutes that Debbie just talked about. Next part I'm talking about right now is this packet. It looks like this. This is from the Lake County Veterans Assistance Commission. This shows just a sampling of approximately twenty-four veterans memorials throughout Lake County. As I was saying, throughout this process, we've heard some talking points of perhaps not being repaired, uh, perhaps not having the ability to do this, and so forth. I stand before you, guaranteeing you that we do have the ability to do this. This document right here, as I said, is from the Lake County Veterans Assistance Commission. I'm a trustee on the executive board. We have the access to data of these memorials and many more. If this process gets approved, we will get this built. This is not something new. I'm going to add to that, since this topic seems to come up. I served on a college Lake County Veterans Commission when they were building their memorial. They actually did a steering committee, because I've heard the topic steering committee talked about in this process. I want to tell you how a steering committee worked, and it worked, and it's kind of sad that we didn't hear much about it here. But for college Lake County, when we did their veterans memorial, the president of the university wanted a committee made up of a sampling of the population. He had a professor from the college. He had a student representative from the college. He had a representative from Graves Lake. He had a veterans representative, that was me, and he had other veterans and other people, a sampling of the community on that board. That steering committee provided what is standing in college Lake County today. They had input from all those different representatives, a true steering group. So once again, this can be done. We have a chance sometime, and I think this is comical, but at the same time, I almost think it's kind of sad. Take your phone and Google Buffalo Grove Veterans Memorial, Lindenhurst Veterans Memorial, North Chicago Veterans Memorial. I tried it. I Googled twenty-eight pictures pop up. Then take a chance and Google Antioch Veterans Memorial. Nothing pops up. The next thing you're going to see in your packet is four pictures. This picture, this picture right here. This is a picture of the only place that we've conducted a veterans ceremony at, other than in front of our VFW. This, I guess, could be considered the Antioch Veterans Memorial. A flag which actually the Antioch VFW and American Legion date for, continues to make, and at Memorial. But then let's take a couple of look at the other pictures. We have a picture here, which is in front of the village hall. We have a picture of the tank. Tank that we just worked, once again, to refurbish the Antioch American Legion VFW donations from the community. And then finally, we have the Blue Star Memorial. This, none of these have any space for any sort of ceremony, thus they've never been used. But once again, all these years, we've done our ceremonies either at the cemetery or in front of the VFW. Something to ponder. Next, you will see what we believe, and we have said and been talking about ever since Debbie started this thing. We have a shovel-ready project to go. You see here a sketch in your packet that Debbie has been walking around with. Followed by that are two examples of what we want as a memorial. This one here, which is in Fort Carson, Fourth ID Memorial. I've been here many times. I've been here to do change of command ceremonies and so forth. The next one shows the centerpiece of what the sculpture we envisioned, and this is in Wichita. Once again, my final command. So we are ready. If you put this in front of a architect, we'll get this done. Let me just leave you with a couple of highlights that I think are interesting and concerning. You see on your agenda, one of the reasons we're here today, I call it present in today. So, the Antioch Parks and Recreation Commission was never informed of the Village Green Park. It never allowed any sort of input to this document. In fact, first time that we heard anything about the park was in a presentation by Jim Kime to the Antioch Parks Recreation Board on the fifteenth of February. This presentation for an eleven million dollar park dated twenty-five January was done before any of us on the Parks and Recreation Commission ever heard about it. I'm the second oldest person on that commission. I've been there since two thousand and thirteen. We were told, and I quote, I wrote this down, because one of the things I'd learned a long time ago, I only deal in facts, because assumptions get people killed. We were told by the Parks and Recreation Director, as a board, it was an oversight that our board wasn't included any sort of input here. I'm going to say that again. This was an oversight. Tell you one thing, as a combat commander, if my staff did that to me, I would fire them. Let's take this a little bit further. So the Lakota Allies Group didn't make an online survey available to members of the Antioch community. We learned that four hundred people, that comes to two point eight-five percent of Antioch, answered the survey. The population of Antioch in twenty twenty-one, which is the latest, most pertinent data we have, twenty twenty-one population, fourteen thousand eight twenty-four. So, owning an eleven million dollar park, and you got two point eight-five percent input from the community, I'll tell you one thing, I would, would have taken it a step further. I would have looked for some more input, but they did. What can I find this common? So, the Lakota group provided one opportunity for public and would. That was during a wine walk. I was there. I'm just going to go to every wine walk, because I work for Recreation Commission. So let's think about the target audience. I'm pretty good at that. I know a lot about targets. You have a wine walk with four hundred people coming downtown to drink wine and shop. I kind of question how many people are going to be interested in stopping by the table with a bunch of draftings and renderings? I'll tell you how many. None, because I stopped by there. I don't drink, but I spent a half hour with the guy. I took a folder, like that blue folder here, because I knew he was going to be there. I copied everything that Debbie talked about, that we're talking about. I gave it to that person from Lakota group. We spent a half hour talking. He enjoyed it, because no one else was talking with him. I guess that conversation went over. We're not in the survey. We've heard others say that it's too late to change plans. And this almost seems like a tactic. And I know all about talking, because I'm in the military. I asked someone to prove it to me. How is it too late? This is a PowerPoint presentation. I'll tell you one thing I learned at War College. I know how to do PowerPoint presentations. Show me an architectural drafting. Who's the architectural firm? We don't have any. We just heard the administrator mention it. It's going out to bid. So you're telling me these people will stay at us, can't be changed? I'll take it a step further. I'm the acting president. I'm the acting president for the Antioch Public Library District. We do change orders. Change orders because of complex construction. So I'm going to use a definition here, because once again, this seemed to be something that I was questioning then. So I'll give you the definition of a change order. This is from Webster's. Change orders modify the work required by contract documents to include designs, draftings, and contracts, and are typical in complex construction. So as the acting president of the Antioch Public Library District, we have made change orders every month. You see the complex construction. I have a meeting next Tuesday. I'm very confident we'll be voting on another change order. So, if we can make changes, that complex building there, which will probably open in several months, please prove to me and the rest of this committee how changes can't be made to this. Finally, I'll just leave you with this before I turn it over to my partner. We have been talking about this. It's a lot more than talking. It's actions. And for those who question us being prepared, for those who say, we're worried, but we were here. We are prepared. We will get this done. I guarantee, if the vote is yes, it does in front of an architect, you're going to have plans within hours. Done this, we can do it. Thank you. Jay?
Hey, Jawswiak. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. Couple things I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that you're not aware of, probably. In the village of Antioch, we have four hundred and eighty-eight veterans buried in the cemeteries here. The American Legion, the VFW, we, we are always in concert together to support these communities. We have three hundred and two current members. You know, we do community outreach programs. We do parades, ceremonies. We support the community service. We donate money every year to the high school. And for, for the last eighty-nine days of the year, uh, there have been meetings provided to the Parks and Recreation, the Public Library, Lions Club, Sonic Lodge, Sailors Dinners, and they're all at free, free charge to these folks and to these, uh, uh, communities. So, between the VFW and American Legion, we make that building available to everybody at no charge. Just so everybody knows, we're not making a bunch of money off anybody in our village. We're part of the village, and we're the creators part of the village. So, thank you for listening, for your time. I'll turn it back over to Debbie and Paul for summary.
We're not here to delay or disrupt the progress on the park. We want to work with you. Why the eleventh hour, or where were we two years ago? We were here. We've been here for eleven years. I've had conversations with Mayor Hanson, Administrator Kime, and several trustees. I met with Mayor Gardner last spring. Paul and Jay met with Mayor Gardner last fall. Building a veterans memorial is not new news. Not building a veterans memorial is a slap in the face to every veteran, past, present, and future in this village. Last Thursday, Administrator Kime stated that he had six to eight weeks to send the project out to bid. We can meet that, Debbie. to send the project out to bid. We can meet that, Debbie.
Well, thank you, Jay and Debbie. So in conclusion, the board, to the mayor, we appreciate your time this evening. To our audience members, once again, we appreciate you being here as well. For those trustees, plan of supporting us, we thank you. We appreciate your professionalism, your courage, and your leadership. For those trustees, for those trustees who don't, I only question one thing. We provided you facts. If you have any questions, let us know. But we have provided you facts, not assumptions. Facts. And for those trustees who decided no, vote no, I'm gonna leave you with this song. You will be able to vote no because of us. You'll be able to vote no because of every veteran who has fought for this country, who's fought for democracy, who's fought for the rule of law, and who has fought for our way of life. You vote no. Thank God, because we gave you that ability to vote no. And if you do vote no, maybe you might forget about it after a day. Might forget about it after a week. You might forget about it a month or a year later. But one thing is veterans. We keep fighting and fighting and fighting. That's what we do. We run into the battle when others turn the other way. We sign on the dotted line when others have no interest other than watching us sign and serve. But we never forget. We'll never forget those who support us. For those that don't remember, we gave you that ability to say no. Thank you, and have a nice evening.
So, um, Sharin, comments of trustee Pierce, do you?
I don't know where to start. Um, I'm taking a deep breath, trying to gather myself. I can thank myself, too. I was never a high ranking military officer who thought everybody had to sit here and remember his duty. I remember my duty. I remember serving off the coast of Lebanon, the coast of Libya, calling my wife and telling her my ship wasn't one who sunk. I never come back here saying, I deserve this. I come back here saying, what war can I do for my country? So don't come up here and lecture me about my duty, my honor, my courage, my commitment, my ability to do my job, my professionalism. I do my job up here. I don't appreciate it. And I'm very insulted by it. I understand your need for veterans' memorial. I really do, and I think the village of Antioch needs one. I don't necessarily think it possibly belongs here. I have to still think about it. I have to still consider it. But to come up here and take the tactic you took as if you're going to war was totally unprofessional and uncalled for. I don't appreciate it, and that's all I'm gonna say, because I have served, and I have served with you all. And I've served with my fellow sailors. So, thank you. I appreciate your time. I appreciate all my veterans. I appreciate your service to the country. But I don't appreciate what just occurred from you specifically. Thank you.
Trustee Mason?
I'm gonna start by telling another little story. So my dad served in World War Two. My dad was a medic in World War Two. His unit, everybody was shot. The, the Japanese went and she was a medic. Everybody went and shot everybody twice. He lost a kidney. He played dead. Some reason, he was spared of getting shot twice. He had PTSD before there was such a thing, PTSD. I grew up, they called it shell shock, going to the VF, the, the veterans in North Chicago. I went to apply to be like him. Went to Chicago for my medical. I was told, sorry, Mr. Mason, you can't be in the army because of your back. It was devastating. So I found other routes. That's why I said first responders. I found other routes to serve my community as being on the fire department and the rescue squad. Couldn't serve. But my dad sits, being a Purple Heart, on the wall over in Lendenhurst. And I don't go to Antioch at the VFW. I go to, I go to Lendenhurst to honor him. There's nothing in Antioch to honor the vets. I honor him. And the old mayor, Paul, over there, I shake his hand every time because he was a friend. My dad and him were good friends. That's what a memorial is all about. You know what the Colonel was talking about and, and, and coming up here? You know, the Parks Department wasn't involved. They were advisory committee. No, they're not. They're not. Planning and zoning is an advisory committee with a vote. So, I don't understand, our vets are the most important people that give us our freedom. I, 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 and, and the people during World War Two was the women that supported the vets that worked in the factories. People forget history. So, I couldn't serve like my dad, and I let my dad down in a point. But I served him in other ways. My grandfather started the first paramedic unit up in Stevenson, Michigan, made him proud. He was never a paramedic. I was a paramedic. I served as president of the Antioch Rescue Squad. Couldn't serve in the US Army, but I served Antioch Rescue Squad, where we took no tax money at that time before I retired. So to sit there and say, we don't deserve to honor the vets, I, I, I don't understand. So, the eleventh hour, what, what Colonel Haddock said, they were left out. They should have been brought in the first day when we started this project. I said it two years ago, and I said, today is gonna blow up, and that's exactly what happened, that today was gonna blow up. So we can't sit there and say everything blew up at the eleventh hour, because it didn't. I said it when I said it two years ago, and I even made a phone call to Ainsley to say, do you remember when I said this? And I called Mayor Hanson, do you remember when I said this? And both of them agreed when I said this. And both of them agreed that Ed Mason said that we should honor the vets, and maybe we should look at maybe saying Memorial Park, memorialize the people that gave us their freedom. Memorialize the people, the first responders. I said that two years ago. And everybody ignored us. And what we ought to be working for is good government. And maybe we should take and put ten thousand dollars aside and figure out when the board says we need soil samples, why didn't those soil samples get done? So I'm gonna ask for a motion. I'll make the motion to put ten thousand dollars aside to get better government, say, when the board unanimously asks for something to get done by staff, why isn't it done? How did we get that broken? We need an independent study why our government is broken. And why things aren't getting done. When, when the board votes unanimously to get this done, and staff just ignores the board unanimously, I want some money set aside to do an independent investigation, how staff is allowed to ignore a unanimous vote. They cannot do that. They don't have the right to do that. So, I'm gonna make a motion to put some money aside, five thousand, ten thousand dollars to do an independent investigation. How is staff allowed to just do what the hell they want? So that's gonna be my motion right now. If anybody wants to second my motion, how is staff allowed, if an unanimous vote went out, and that's in a minute, so staff just ignores that motion, what Debbie said, how is staff allowed? We should be honoring good government.
Uh, trustee Mason, um, obviously it's not on the agenda. We understand your passion on this issue. Um, if you'd like to have this on a power, we're gonna be needing for next time, but it is not on the agenda of the board.
Okay, then, then, then my passion is to put it on the agenda. Because something is lacking with good government, something's lacking with staff ignoring. If that was truly an unanimous motion, and it was just blown off, then that should be looked at at the next meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Peterson?
Well, I too would love to see a, a memorial for the veterans. I, my family has many, many veterans, as you know. So I I respect them, I admire them. We are who we are because of them, and I agree with you. I, I'd like to digest this and look at this, and, and I don't think we can make a decision at this board meeting tonight, but um, I hear what you said. And um, I'd like to digest this. But I truly want a memorial as well. Don't know where, but I want a memorial.
Trustee Luther?
Kind of break things down into categories. I'm not, I'm not break this down into probably to oversimplify it, but there's, there's three different categories. Number one, I don't think there's anyone on this board or in this village, and especially you, that don't respect the armed forces, your, your veterans, and what you've done for our country. So I think all of us stand in support and thank you for what you've done. Uh, I've had members of my family killed overseas. I've had members that served. Uh, I did not have the pleasure of serving myself, but I respect everything you've done for us and for our country. Number two is, I agree that we should have a more appropriate veterans' memorial somewhere in this town. Now, I was not a member of the board when this was initially discussed in, going back uh, to two thousand and four, it appears, and in, in, in two thousand and sixteen, I was not a member of this board. I was not a member of this board when the, the property was purchased. I came on in, in twenty one, and what I can say from that point, moving forward, when it came to this property here, and if I, if, if there's, if I'm mistaken, I'll apologize later. It was never once brought up at a village board meeting or at any of our quarterly meetings about putting a memorial on that particular grounds. Now, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just saying that's, that was the facts from, from my perspective as a trustee. I've had no one reach out to me yesterday regarding putting a veterans' memorial on that particular piece of property. Now, where I have a little bit of actual issue with some things said tonight is that if anyone on the park board or anyone in town that's actively been in Antioch for the last two years, tells me they didn't know about this park project up until this week, I find that really hard to believe. There have been drawings, we've had a march and parade, we've had signs up on the property. I mean, we've been talking about this project for a year and a half, once we decided to um, to build that development there, and like, as trustee Pierce said, it's, it's a portion of his apartment. It's really a redevelopment of that whole piece of property. Now, and that's where I'm having an issue with this, is, is the timing. I mean, we've, it's been on agendas, it's been everywhere of us approving this as we've moved along. Now, I do have a problem with the fact that park board wasn't more involved. I was also led to believe through communications I've had with park director and, and others, that they were being communicated to, and I, I would like to look into that myself and find out why that wasn't being done, because that's unacceptable to me, because it is to you. Um, that being said, but there's, there's been plenty of advertisement, not just in village promotion, but in publications, others, about the, the process and what we're doing with that property. I wish that you would have, or anyone would have reached out to me six months, eight months, three months ago about that, because I would have supported putting something there, and I still kind of would like to see something there. But now we're at a point where we, we've come to a consensus on this board of what's gonna go on that property. We've set a budget for it. We've kind of made, not kind of, we have made decisions about what's going there. So to change that at this point, no, it's not impossible, it can be done, but it's, it's gonna cost money, it's gonna cost time, it's gonna cost efforts that, you know, I wanna, I wanna see us progressing on this and not regressing on, on this project. That being said, I'm open to if we could find a way to fit in a memorial on that property. Let's, let's look into that, but we don't need to, I mean, there's some issues that need to be told. What's the cost? Which portion of the property? And, and are we talking about a hundred percent village cost, uh, a share on this? Or are we talking about a public-private share for the cost of this memorial? Those are the things that are, need to be discussed, because if we spend, and looking at your drawings, I don't know if you have cost estimates on those. I'm guessing that's a half a billion dollars worth of memorial, if, on the bow way. So if we do that, what are we taking away from that project that we've already agreed to put in there? Do we get away with the inclusive Antioch Park for the kids? Do we get away with the water feature, which everyone in town or a lot of the residents requested and wanted? Do we get away with the, the, the building? I mean, you have to offset things in order to pay for that. Now, not everything has to be done at once. Not everything has to be done immediately. I would love to see us expand this committee of two that you have, um, which I wasn't even fair as a committee. But to get more trustees involved, get more people involved, let's design and build something proper. And maybe that ends up being out a piece of that property there, and maybe it ends up in the greenery area. Or maybe it ends up somewhere else in town, like the mayor mentioned, uh, uh, by the lake over on fifty nine, which would be a beautiful setting. I agree you deserve, and the veterans deserve a memorial. Now, here, I hope I don't upset you with this. I did not appreciate, and I'm gonna use this term, because this is the way I felt, being threatened that if I vote no, I'm putting a, a memorial in that park, that that's war? I'm sorry, don't do that to me. Don't say war. That's what it sounded like. And you're gonna charge in, and you're gonna remember, you're gonna do this. I don't appreciate that, because you know what? We will support you, and I'll support you on a memorial, but don't dare put me up against the wall and say, if you don't know, we're gonna have issues. Because that's, that I don't appreciate. I'm willing to work with you, I'm willing to go forward with any of you. And I'm willing to make the first, I'll make a contribution right now, five hundred dollars towards this memorial. Today, I'll write you a check. I support the veterans, but do not put me up against the wall and say, if you vote no, you're our enemy. Because that's what it sounded like. Now, if you didn't mean it, fine, but that's what it sounded like. So that I'll say I didn't appreciate. I wanna work with you guys. Let's build a memorial that everyone will love to see, and we can have and respect and pay homage to our veterans. Let's do it properly. Let's work forward. I can't go back before I was on the board, I can't go back to two thousand and four, I moved here ninety nine. But I would love to see a nice memorial built, something that pays homage to all of the services, and let's do it properly. If we can fit it in that park, and it doesn't upset the whole project and change the whole, uh, design of it, fine, let's find a way. If not, let's find a piece of property in town that we can do that in. Let's put the money together, let's raise it, public-private partnerships, wherever it takes to get it done, and I'll be the first one to write the check, like I said. And I'll be willing to work with you, but please, don't put me against the wall and say, if you don't do it on this piece of property, we're gonna have problems, because that's where I have a problem with that. So, and that's all I'll say at this time.
Right, thank you. Let me just say, we appreciate your consideration. Let me also clarify.
Just, just, um, go to my room, just because there are people on Zoom and trustees that can't hear what we're saying.
Once again, thank you. We appreciate your consideration, and I just want to clarify a few things.
One, I didn't use the word war, and I did not use anything threatening. I'm a police officer, I'm not gonna use anything threatening, so if you took it that way, I apologize.
Excuse me, who's speaking? Who's speaking?
Paul Haddock, I'm responding back to Brent's comments.
Thank you, I can't see because I don't have internet, and I could not hear who got up to speak.
You're welcome, your honor. So Brent and Scott, if you took my comments to be combative or warlike, they're not. I'm a very peaceful person, I come back to war and only thought and sought ways to find peace, take my word for it.
Also, let's be peaceful on this and work together, and get it done, and, and, and let's move forward on it and figure out a way to honor the veterans and, and the way that they deserve, and that we can, we can do it in the village, and as a people, to honor all of you. Let's, let's find a way to do that and, and stay away from uh the, the rhetoric that can be interpreted incorrectly on either side.
I understand, so once again, if you, if you took my rhetoric to be combative, it is not. It was not, and once again, if you heard me conclude, I did say thank you for your time, so I, I've been saying.
Your honor, are the other, are, are trustee Berman and I gonna be able to speak, or are we done here?
No, we're still going around, we're still going around, it's just uh
Thank you.
Some conversation that was taking place, I wanted to be able to be heard on the microphone, so um trustee Berman.
All right, listen, the way that I see it is, if, this has been a discussion that's gone on for, I mean, it's, what, close to a decade? I don't see that as being an oversight. Since I've been on this board, I do, I have noticed a pattern, um which is very similar to this, where things are talked about, but they never get done. We were elected by the people of this town, we are their voice, and we've asked for things and we don't get it. I guess, how long did we discuss the gazebo? There was quite a bit of discussion on that. I just don't understand how something like this could have been forgotten. I think it's shameful, I think it's disgusting, um and I do see it as a slap in faces of veterans. They're I know this is kind of bringing in something that's not related to this, but it, it, it is, because as I stated before, there's patterns here. Several months ago, we had, um on our agenda, we had about the five G cell towers on the, uh, the water tower. Once again, it's apparent that residents were not made aware of any of this, they didn't know about it. I also had asked about studies and uh safety issues, health issues. And there really wasn't any further discussion, I came here with a stack, almost like a, a skeen hole of printer paper. It was printed out with studies that I stated had to do with the five G, and yet there was barely any discussion on it, and it was, it was voted in. So I don't see this as just being an oversight. I do feel like there are things being brushed under the rug, things are being ignored, and things are just being pushed through to get things done, and I don't, I don't believe that that is the correct way to be doing this. I don't think it's honest, I don't think it's transparent. We do owe our veterans, they sacrificed a lot, some lost their lives, some came home, um but disabilities that they, they were never able to do things the way that they did it before they left for war, to fight for our freedoms. As I stated, I think we need to slow down a bit, and we need to prioritize what we're doing here. I think that there's too much being handed out to um unelected officials, and there is not enough decision making on part of the people that are actually elected than people of this town.
All right, thank you trustee um Tuminiak.
I'm trying to decide if less is more here. I, I, I've been making notes as I've been listening to everybody, and so I'm gonna be somewhat redundant of some of the comments that have already been made, but that's, I guess, the part of the fun of having the last cheer. I don't think there's anybody on this board that doesn't support veterans. I don't think there's anybody on this board that wouldn't support a veterans memorial. I don't think there's anybody on this board that says it can't be done. I don't disagree that the parks board commission, which is advisory to us, did not have had some formal participation in this process. But on the other hand, I also agree with anybody who suggested over the past year and a half or so that if anybody did not know we were working on this park and didn't have some ideas and didn't bring them forward, we're all adults here. You know, if somebody would spend a half hour talking to somebody at the wine walk and, and brought forward an idea and didn't feel like it went anywhere, gosh, I would have been, you all know me, I would have been in front of everybody saying, hey, what's going on here? For anybody to suggest that we don't get things done, we've gotten more done in the past two years than we did for the other ten years that I've been on this board. Maybe we need to explore with the person that, that wanted this done before and no longer on the board and find out why that person didn't make those soil samples happen. I don't think we need to slow down, that hole's been there for over four years. We're gonna slow down now? People are screaming about that. They were screaming about it before, I worked on the survey that we did for the vision. We surveyed five thousand households, and by the way, you don't do your, as a PhD nurse that did research and surveys, you don't count every person and make up your, your response rate ba- based on the fact that there's six months old living in your town. But everybody talked about that corner, and nothing was getting done. It didn't get done until it rained so hard that that hole was created. So to suggest that we should slow down makes no sense to me. And it doesn't really matter to me, because I'm going off this board, so anything that I say or push for is not gonna affect my ability to stay on the board. My concern about putting this on that property is it's last minute, number one, but secondly, and I guess I see it differently, I think it's a park. It's being redeveloped, but it's being redeveloped as a park. It's not being redeveloped as retail, it's not being redeveloped as residential, it's a park. It's a place we want people to congregate and have fun. For me, and I, I looked at the pictures that were presented by the veterans memorial committee, and those are places of reverence. I can't see putting a place of reverence right next to where people are congregating and having fun. That's just my opinion, I think that there are other locations. If the Bill Brooks or the, the land over by the wetlands was something that we all agreed to, and I was part of that, then maybe we ought to go down that path, and maybe we should be thinking about how do we move forward on this, rather than pointing fingers and bitching at each other and about each other and about everybody else, because it hasn't gotten done. I think it needs a bigger space. I think that we need a memorial that is, that is honorable to the people that have served. You know, I mean, we all come from families that serve, my dad was in the Marines and, and the, and the Army. I, I have uh good friends that have been, had their lives were destroyed by what happened to them in Vietnam. So for anybody to think that, you know, none of us on the board, or any of us on the board are not supportive of veterans, I'm sorry, you're, you're wrong. So I think we need to, need focus on how do we move forward on this? How do we make a commitment to the veterans in our town? That we are behind them, that we wanna do a memorial, but we wanna find the best place for that memorial, rather than slapping it in a corner, one corner of that park. We've got other properties that we could be looking at, and I would vote for us to come up with a path to make that happen, but to move forward on the park that we have. And then I'm also gonna say that as I'm making these notes about what people are saying, the word that I wrote when Colonel Haddock was speaking was threatened. And perception is reality, and I did not appreciate the fact that if I don't say yes, we should stop this process and figure out a way to put a memorial on that park. I felt threatened that I was gonna be held in, in whatever circumstance by people in this community. I want a memorial, but I am not gonna be threatened into voting, I have never been threatened into voting. I had been told, oh, you need to vote on this or you won't get reelected, that's never been the way I, I vote, and I'm not gonna do it now, as I'm ending my career as a trustee, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, and before I go around and get some trustees who wanna um probably speak again, I would like to offer um administrator time or any staff, uh if they would like to say anything, no need to either way, I just wanna make sure since, you know, it was brought up historically, give you the opportunity, if you don't, I'll move on, I'll have a couple things I would like to say.
Thank you, your honor, um I don't necessarily wanna get into a rebuttal. You know, most of what was said here, I believe is very factual. I don't think there needs to be any investigation of staff not performing. I, I, I don't, it was six or seven years ago, so my recollection isn't perfect, but I do recall uh talking about soil borings and getting a price on soil borings, and whether it was six thousand dollars or whatever the number was. Uh but, but I was not given a direction to proceed on that, and that's all I'm gonna say about it. Not gonna dispute the fact that it was talked about in the meeting, I don't know if a formal, formal vote was taken. But I was not given direction to proceed with that expenditure for soil borings in that location, and that, and I don't recall exactly what the circumstance was. What I do know is that the village very deliberately entered into a process to do a beautification plan for the downtown environment, which included um a public input component. And that public input component consisted of largely an online survey, and there was a pop-up as as Paul Haddock mentioned, where they, they got some other, other inputs. That resulted in a downtown beautification plan that was, it's, it's almost one year old exactly today, I believe it's dated February twenty third of twenty twenty-two. And it had a, a section on there labeled, you know, the public has spoken, and, and what that basically, um you know, tallied up was what, what was the most um, you know, sought after, most popular features that the public wanted to see in this park. In my directive, after that plan was presented to the board, was to proceed on this park and include those items. Those items included a splash pad, a bridge, an open creek, a pavilion, plazas for, for gathering spaces, you know, a, a building, fire pits, you know, so I proceeded on a directive from this board to deliver that exact thing. And that's what I did. And I've been persuaded to move this project along. I appreciate the comment, um that this is going too fast. I appreciate that, because I've never been accused of moving a project too fast. But um the fact of the matter is, it, it is in the board's purview um to decide what goes in this park. Um we've proceeded very deliberately with a process, with public input, with check-ins, I, I think there are at least a dozen or more um checkpoints with the village board about where this is at. And we are nearly, you know, at, at the finish line of a, a year-long process with, with a lot of expenditure to get it to where it is right now. A, a decision to change the scope of this project, it's not a change order. Change orders occur after contracts are let, I mean, there will for sure be change orders, but that's, th- this would be a change in scope um that will likely affect other elements of the park. I, I do not feel that this should be approached in a uh, in, in anything but a very um deliberate fashion to locate a, a memorial and select a site and have it proceed, you, you know, to, to, I don't want it to be something that's an afterthought, or that's, you know, somehow shoved in a corner of this park either, I, I think that comment's been made, and I, I fully agree with that. I like everyone else, fully supportive of veterans. But any uh, you know, looking back in time on, on this, I don't think does anybody any good. Uh I think moving forward, um I would just like clear direction um on how we'd like to proceed, because I, I literally have you know, you, you've met the main designers, you've met the architects, you've met the engineer, you've, you've met the landscape architect, but there are teams of people behind them that are now scheduled to spend a lot of effort to bring this across the finish line to produce these construction documents, so um I would just like clear direction moving forward, whether I help that and pivot and introduce a new element, uh which i- in my mind will mean a, a kind of a redesign, a, a change in scope of this design, and it may move other things, which affect, you know, which affect utility placements and landscaping plans and path placement, you know, the list goes on and on and on, there's a ripple effect when we talk about doing this, but I, I will do whatever the board feels is best and execute that to the best of my ability.
Thank you. All right, so I'm gonna make a couple little statements and a suggestion, and then actually then go around with the trustees to, to speak if they wish. So um in coming up on two years here, I've learned a lot, sitting in the seat and public process and engagement of public and, and all the above that we've talked about, I'm sure that uh we've made mistakes in this process, which I've said and um aren't perfect, but I am um proud of the process that the village has gone through, the staff, the trustees, and everybody here has gone through in this matter. I believe the reason that someone selected it, because things um tend to move slow in government, and we're moving um slow. Uh so at this point, I am not uh um looking to uh slow anything down anymore than it has already been, um coming from a business background and coming to government, um that's one of my biggest frustrations. Um I do, um one thing I will say that I heard tonight that I do not agree with is that um we're not transparent, and I hate that word, because it means different things to each person, but I think I try and pride ourselves and our board and our village um through our communications on being transparent. Um just for my own review, I asked the village to pull timelines of what we have done on this project since it started. You know, whether it be uh two thousand and one, we had since had four agreements or um reports from Lakota. We've had twenty village board meetings where this park has been on the agenda from two thousand and twenty-one to um January, um we've had web updates these five times, another different um items to reach out, so again, um I don't think we have made an effort to be transparent in what we're doing, and um could we do better? Yes, as I said here, I think about, um obviously, like I said earlier, the parks board, the veterans group, you know, um what if the garden club came here, what if the historical society came here, I, I'm trying to be as open-minded um about this to everybody. And again, I do agree that the veterans memorial of some sort is very important and lacking um in this town. Um on that note, you know, uh we, obviously we can't send letters out to everybody, and we post our village board meetings, and they're online, and um just like the law, like ignorance of the law is not a defense, we have board meetings every two weeks, so you know, the people can come here, and, and we do appreciate that, because it's the one time we get to hear from our residents, other than on Facebook, I guess, so. I would ask, and I know Rachel, my assistant, Jim's assistant listens to these, so Rachel, if you're listening, giving you work as we're sitting here. But I would like to request that. Next week. We have a follow up meeting with this committee, whether it's the committee of three or you bring in other individuals that are interested here tonight. Myself, the village administrator, the architect. I'd like to bring the labor group that has talked about coming in and. Donating some of their time and efforts and materials towards this. I would like to ask that a park board member be included in that. And a trustee, and I'll probably have six trustees that'll want to do that. I have to figure out how we can do that without having a open meetings violation, so. I'm gonna ask that we, you guys look at your schedule for. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of next week. And like I said, I don't want to delay this, but I want to come to a point where. We have consensus and agreement and we can all. Move forward because. I don't want to slow this down and for you guys either. It's been 10 years at least, so. Hopefully that makes some sense, gives us a process acceptable. And I'll make sure that Rachel reaches out to everybody as soon as tomorrow to schedule it. All right, in that regard, I'd like to give the trustees another chance to ask any questions or. Make any statements. Trustee Pierce?
Well, first of all, I'd like to take a moment to thank. Paul heading first and up here redefining what his purpose and what he's attempting to do. On top of that, I'd like to say, Brent, you spoke much better than I normally do tonight, so I appreciate your input. And Mary Domeniac, I appreciate your input too because you said a lot of things that I was thinking, but didn't say one so well. There may have been a few words Mary said that I wanted to say. But. At the same time. I I do think the mayor is probably right that we need to, and and everybody's right, we need to move forward with some form of memorial. I don't know if this is the right place. But we need to start the ball rolling and get things done because. I was here for all those meetings. And I remember the discussions. I don't, you know, there weren't ever any formal votes that I remember. There were a lot of discussions. There were directions to get things done, but never got done, so. Now it's time to get things done. I just don't know if this is.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Maisig.
There's a lot of I don't understand. I don't understand, you know, even the park, why the parks wasn't more involved with this whole project from. Two years ago. Mine's a lot of I don't understands that, you know. That that they 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 don't come to our meetings and and, you know. It's 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 more of a confusion that they didn't have a bigger say so with with. Designs and stuff like that before they came to us. They should get, you know, their advisory board and. And maybe maybe this park could be a better place if they if they did. A little more. Where the trees should be, where this should be, the yellow brick road. Instead of just being a fictitious organization. You know, give them more. Teeth than just. I don't even know what they do. I I I've never been to a parks board meeting, shame on me, but. Maybe, maybe, and it'd be. I can ask the clerk to email me the last. Since this project's been in in business, the last two years of their minutes. So then then that would update me of what. The parks do. Or have done, and who puts their agenda together because maybe their agenda wasn't part of the parks. And they didn't have the opportunity to be. On the agenda or just like us, we'd love to speak of it, but it's not on the agenda. So they can't ask questions because it's not on the agenda, can't talk about it because it's not on the agenda. How they get it on? Well, it's not on the agenda. So I'd just like to see the last two years of their minutes. So if you can email me, that'd be perfect.
Trustee Maisig, they should be on our website. I'll send you the link.
Thank you very much. And I guess I'll I'll be FOING some, a bunch of other stuff, so. Tomorrow you get a FOIA FOIA request for some other stuff.
Thank you, trustee Peterson.
I can think of possibly three locations right around the village here that. Would be a great spot. Excuse me. For a memorial. Should have parking. Easy access. After all, it is a veterans memorial and we have some veterans that are going to have a hard time getting there, so it should be easily accessed and and. Thoughtfully put together. And. I would like to be part of it. I'm not sure this is the park, this place for it. But I wanted. With this meeting that's going to happen next week, I'd love it to be on the next scale. And let's talk about it and let's keep talking about it and find a spot. And go forward, do some fundraising or figure out a way to pay for it. And I I can think of. Th- this would be something that Antioch would really rally around. And be very proud of. It's a priority and I thank you for coming tonight and. Making it a priority. So I have.
Thank you, trustee Luca.
You know, I'm almost glad that this happened tonight because it it clears the air and gets us going in a direction. I'll only say this is that, you know. Since I've been on this board and I don't tell other people this and it shocks me, but as a board for almost two years. I have have less than maybe three or four people that have reached out to me in those two years to contact me about anything village related. I I was shocked at that. And when. As a trustee, you're elected by the people. Based on what you tell them you want to do and you try to listen to them. I can't listen when they're not speaking. So what I'm going to say to anyone here, if you have an issue with anything going on in the village. Call your trustee, call your elected officials and let them know. Don't assume that because you talked to one that the others won't, because a lot of times we can't communicate about things because of. Freedom or or Open Meetings Act and other things together. So I just offer to all of you, anytime you want to talk about any issues regarding the village that you would like the board to discuss or anything, please reach out to me regarding this, any other issue. So that we can prevent things like this from happening moving forward. And and I look forward and and, you know, I know what the mayor said, everyone's going to want to volunteer to sit on that committee. I would love to sit on that committee. But I would love to be a part of this process in any way to get you. This village and especially the veterans memorial that you can be proud of and that you will be proud to show. To all your fellow veterans around the state and country and invite them, Antioch, to see the memorial that you helped build. And and I want to be a part of that in whatever little way I can be, I'm willing to do that. So let's start that ball rolling and let's let's move forward and and I thank you for coming out and. And Paul, I apologize if I misinterpreted what you said. But and I think you you stated that and we cleared the area a little bit and I just look forward to working with you moving forward on this and anything else.
No money changes hands in the in the border. Trustee. I'll let the trustees finish. Yeah, trustees go and then we'll wrap it up and.
Go ahead. Don't, don't sit down. I I don't, I don't have anything further.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, trustee Domeniac.
Yeah, I like your idea, Mayor, of getting a meeting together and I'd like us to have that on the agenda for the next meeting as well and. Thinking about the dollars for this would make a recommendation that if. The Antioch Veterans Memorial Committee that I wasn't aware of existed might look into creating a 501(c)(3). So that, and maybe the village can help with that, so that you can do fundraising to help support this as well. So. I think to trustee Peterson's point, everybody in the community will rally around to support this, but that would be a great. Vehicle for you to explore, I think. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, I just want to thank everybody. And I that, I just want to say that I want to thank everybody for their, for coming to the meeting, for doing it here. Where it's the right forum for it, for everyone's passion about this and hopefully see some real progress on this. In a expeditious way, and I say expeditious, I mean like. Weeks, not. Years, okay, so. Ms. Renter?
First, is the year you talked about a meeting you want it next week, but then I heard someone say about the cow.
No, I want to have a meeting next week of not a public board meeting, but I want to keep this on the agenda, like I'm keeping the park. The center, whatever we're going to call it, on the agenda every week until we get something resolved. I want to do the same thing with this, where we meet in a small group, a committee, and then come back and report to the board on a cow or board meeting, what our progress is.
I got it, I got it. Okay, thank you. I got it, I got it. And second. Just so there's no confusion on the board, especially for those.
Excuse me, who's speaking? I'm sorry, who's speaking?
It's Debbie Renter. Mary.
Oh, thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. I just didn't, I didn't recognize the voice.
Turning around as if she's here. Okay, and secondly, to anyone on the board who. Says that they want to volunteer to be on the committee. Before warrant, I'm the president of the committee, not Paul. So you all have to deal with me. So.
So you get the check.
I get the check for.
The board, appreciate. All checks at the boardroom.
So. Think about that before you volunteer.
Thank you, thank you. And everybody, right, safe, so we will keep this on the agenda. Rachel, if she's still awake. We'll set up a meeting, otherwise, we'll let her go tomorrow. And thank you, you know, there's two more items on the agenda. I don't know if anybody needs a break, we can keep plugging along. We have two items left. Drive safe. Hi, Michael, I have Mike live. Now, we have two more items on the cow. One is the agendas somewhere, downtown beautification updates. This is Mr. Garrigan, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to be very brief in view of the late hour. I just wanted to provide the board with an update. Obviously, the village is making a major revocation of our downtown. As our discussions reflected this evening between the village park and also our facade programs and our beautification endeavors. But we have also been meeting on a biweekly basis with a number of volunteers and staff. On a small, what we can do on a very small incremental level at a very low budget. Expenditures, as you recall, last year as part of the beautification downtown project, we did some natural plantings. And some decorative lighting throughout the downtown and those endeavors continue. One of the things that we had some limited success last year is we, the park department moved the. Farmer's market to the corner of Main Street and Orchard, which saw some positive traction. So we think there's an opportunity to first, most importantly, make some limited improvements to that property. To make it safe. There are some some grading challenges and the park department has highlighted some opportunities to first. Maybe look at that property and do some very limited, small changes to make sure that the property is safe. For the farmer's market for the season. In addition, we are, we think there's some opportunities to do some small incremental improvements. Obviously, the property is not owned by the village, so it does not make sense to make any major investments in the property. On a short term, but we think there's an opportunity. On a very limited budget to make some small improvements. I I we've given you some, I think, creative illustrations, which you can see in the PowerPoint here. We have some very creative minds on this committee and again, it's made up of not only staff members, but downtown business owners. My trustee Domeniac and other representatives throughout the community are on this. Committee to give up their time along with the garden club to try to make some small improvements to downtown. Again, on a very limited budget. So these are, I think, are some creative ideas that we came up with. As you know, you recall, last year we had talked about doing a large stencil on Lake Street. At the corner of Lake Street in Victoria, and I think there are some a a different, a different consideration of that. And we've come up with this kind of, I think, very creative, maybe a decorative. Reflection of the village's logo that would be a kind of a temporary symbol, which would give the corner higher visibility. We're currently trying to get some different materials again, so the cost, we're trying to keep limit the cost. So as of right now, we don't have a cost for this. Decorative aspect, but again, I think it's a creative concept for this possible corner, which would give better visibility. We're also talking about very briefly doing some some additional native plantings in small areas throughout the downtown. And as you well know, we will continue to have the food truck festival on Top Street. And I think there's an opportunity to do some small improvements, maybe have some. Painting across walks, doing some small little improvements on Top Street, again. Being very sensitive to the budget, to which would give, kind of create a small festival space and highlight that area. For the food truck events, which will be held on a monthly basis on Top Street. So these are all, these are all very small incremental projects. We obviously recognize that long term, a lot of these activities, I eat the farmer's market. And the food truck events may very well move over to the park space, but. This this example gives you some small examples of how Top Street could be painted, maybe for the fest, for the food truck festival, just to create some visual interest and. Again, encourage more people, what we call activation of the street. So again, I wanted to keep a very brief review of the late hour, but. I just wanted to give the board an update of what the beautification committee is doing on a biweekly basis. So I guess, any any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustees, I I. Like I said, I appreciate and will continue these. I guess, updates as they come along and. Anyone have any questions or things on this, these items right now? I don't see shaking their head no here. Brent?
I just have a quick one. Michael, on that. On the corner where you have the the large hay. Did you guys give any consideration to contacting that building owner about doing a ghost sign on that that large old post office wall? Or something there if you are, you know, cleaning up that lot, that would be something that would tie in nicely over there.
We, you know, we actually have not out, we have not reached out to that owner, but that, again, that's another creative idea that, you know, that might make some sense to do that, whether. It's another goal sign or if there's an opportunity to do something from a decorative perspective, I think that is a interesting concept and. We can maybe discuss that and potentially pursue that. So. We're open to any creative ideas that, you know, not only from the residents, the community, but from trustees. And that's what this kind of ad hoc group of volunteers, we're looking for creative concepts, which are, again, very sensitive to our fiscal limitations.
Right, I mean, I just, I would love to see that block cleaned up in any fashion that you have on here.
Correct.
Trustee Vermin, I'll come back to trustee Pierce. Do you have any question?
I don't, no, I don't.
Trustee Domeniac, before I go back to trustee Pierce?
Yeah, I would just just like to add that the idea of doing something on Top Street. Michael was going to reach out to the people in the art community and do something, and actually, your suggestion, trustee Luca is a good one. It ties into. Kind of the discussion we were having. But if you think about what's on the back of the old JJ Blinkers building by the art group there, that, you know, having them maybe help out. I I I think it's really important to update the board on what these activities are and just tying it back into the conversation we just had about wanting to hear from people. You know, we have people on this committee that are residents, that are business owners, and I think it's incumbent upon us as a board to not just get the updates, but to make the commitment to these people that were. Were taking their time and their suggestions and their creativity and actually implementing it. So. You know, I I think, Michael, I'm hoping that you'll put something in the budget for this and maybe we can make this happen to the comment that was made previously that things don't get done. We've been talking about this now for three or four years. I remember when Tim Downey made the presentation about doing this, and that's been a while, so. I would hope that we could move forward on this and not just do updates. Thank you.
Trustee Pierce? I just want to, on that lot that we discussed in the process. Do we have permission from the bank to do improvements on it or? Do we have permission from the bank to do improvements on it or? Not yet, that's conceptual. So I think the thing really talked about before were the. Street paintings, the plantings, the shade structure, some of those things that they're gonna be doing on. This is the first kind of concept of that. But we'll have some more discussions about that. I'm excited on anything, the closed sessions or whatever. Good, yeah, I appreciate it. Um, the other thing, Michael, not the. I've been in two places where I like this last page and um, I'm weighing the pros and cons of the parking issue, but. Uh, uh, New York City is not a good example, but they had these, when I, in New York City, these outdoor, they're almost like. RVs or other things that are cool, like outdoor eating spaces, and I know they have them in Kenosha on the street sometimes. And I like the, I know we do some parking spaces, but activating those spaces with outdoor dining, even if they're, you know, seasonal. Um, I see those in the bottom two pictures. I, I've seen a lot of places doing that. So I think as a board, gonna. Continue to talk about that as a philosophy because, you know. There'd be spaces that would be taken on Main Street, that would cause some problems with the.
Right.
Steelers, but um, let's think through this process and how we can do something like that, even if it's a community outdoor space or something downtown.
Those are, those, uh, your honor, those are called park lots, and you're seeing uh, almost a, uh, you're seeing a proliferation of those. Throughout the United States. So it's a whole concept underway called tactical urbanism. And you're seeing these uh, temporary pop-ups, uh, but the official name's what they call park lot, so kind of an interesting concept.
And actually, uh, um, I don't know if Mary is, Mary Quilty is there or not, but um, one of the things that. We talked about, and it was Maritza's idea, was when we're doing the food festivals, to come up with. Areas on the top street where the kids can play and maybe do some chalk drawing and that kind of thing. So. A lot of really good suggestions from staff regarding how to make that um, event, one that brings more people and have them spend more time there in a community setting.
Alright, trustee uh, Pearson.
Michael, I have a question. Those park lets, are, would they be temporary? Like, they just come out for a festival and then go away?
Yeah, well, they, they can be temp- um, trustee, they, they can be very temporary. So that would be one possibility to bring them up for events. Um, they can also be. Why would say quasi-permanent? Obviously, there's winter months, you, you would re- would remove them. Uh, but for outdoor eating, they could be there for all, in throughout the season, but I think. You know, we, we, based on our preliminary discussions, we're, we're talking about them on a very preliminary. Temporary basis for the festival, for the food, food truck festival.
Okay, now when we're talking about Taft, right?
That's correct. Not, not, obviously not Main Street. Obviously, Main Street would be a non-starter. That's uh, controlled by I dot, so that would be too many challenges. But we're talking.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And trustee Mason, I said, I'm um, trustee Mason or trustee Domeniac, anyone else, anyone else uh, wants to say anything that's on Zoom?
No, I'm thinking I said what I said.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you for the update, uh, Mr. Garian.
Thank you.
We will uh. Rock out with Jim Moran as the last item with the concert update. So uh, Jim.
Could you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. I promise I won't be much more than an hour. Um. Uh, let me just bring up my PowerPoint here. So I wanted to just provide a, kind of a quick update on um, some of the, the, the concert planning. That we're doing for the band shell or some of the, the band shell plans for the summer. Um, just to recap, last year. Um, our It's Thursday Summer Concert Series started on June ninth. We ran through the middle of August. We had nine concerts in total. Uh, that included our Will Rock Royal Bliss Kickoff Concert, um, that i- in. Uh, so the, the, the kickoff concert was a much larger concert than, than a normal concert that we've typically done in the past. Uh, we budgeted uh, for the kickoff concert last year, uh, just over ten thousand dollars was our budget. The, the, the real cost came in with the band at about seventy-five hundred. Uh, some of the revenue that we got in, it was our beer revenue with a partnership that we had with our beer vendors. Where the, the village made back twenty-one hundred. Um, there is uh, some, some T-shirt sales that kind of uh. Cancelled out the cost of the T-shirts and that sort of thing. Uh, but uh, last year, uh, from what I understand, uh, the, the concerts. For the most part were extremely well received. It was, they were executed well and brought a lot of people downtown. Uh, so as we look ahead to this next summer and as we plan things. Um, it's going to be the similar timeframe, June eighth through August eleventh. Uh, one thing, uh, there'll be eight Thursday night concerts this year and kick, including the kickoff concert. Uh, we will not have a Thursday evening concert the week of July fourth, and uh, we decided. Uh, with the Fourth of July being on Tuesday, we're, we're actually making, um, we've got uh, a real good lineup for the Fourth of July party. Uh, that we're, we're doing at Williams Park. And just the way the week work, works out with, with folks being out on a. Tuesday night for the Fourth of July, going back to work Wednesday, and then maybe coming back out for a concert Thursday. There might be some fatigue there and that sort of thing. So. Um, the, the, we made the, the decision not to have a concert that week on the Thursday, but uh. We'll definitely make up for it with the Fourth of July party at Williams Park. Um, without the, the opening concert for this year for the bands we're looking at. Um, a typical band uh, for Thursday night costs in the neighborhood of eighteen hundred to two thousand dollars. I don't have the historical data at this point. Um, when, when I come back uh, for, for budget season, I'll, I'll have more specific data for you. Uh, but um, bands are increasing in cost. So our typical Thursday night band that we're looking at is in the neighborhood of eighteen hundred to two thousand dollars. Our kickoff concert, um, I don't have any specifics to share with you at this point. Um, I, it was some of the feedback I got was the rock concert was great last year. Um, country was, was something that. Um, I hea- I heard might do well, and as I looked at just evaluating things, I, I, I would agree with that. Based on the demographic that we want to draw downtown. Um, the, the, the bands that, that would, that we looked at that. Are affordable, uh, relatively speaking, and that would draw what we want to do and basically achieve what we want to do at the band shell. Uh, would be in the neighborhood of, of seventeen thousand, so compare that to what we had budgeted this past year at the, just over ten thousand. So it's a, it's a bit of an increase. Um, so to do, uh, to do a country band, I, I, I've been working with a country radio station. Uh, again, not to get into the specifics until I have something more concrete, but the country radio station I'm working with. Uh, has about a million listeners a week, and I, I bring that up because one of the emphasis that we're, we're looking for with the band shell for downtown. Is there, there's, there's two things really we're focusing on, you know, figuring out ways to, to bring in more event revenue through things like sponsorships, and I'll get into this in the next slide. Uh, but also um, economic development for downtown, uh, putting on events that are gonna draw the demographic that we want to. To patronize our businesses and restaurants and that sort of thing. So that's in a nutshell, our Thursday night concert. I've got a couple new things I wanted to bring up the board tonight, and that's, it's one of the reasons I'm here. And uh, you know, given the late hour and, and just, I, I, I understand sometimes. It, you know, if you're like me, you go to a meeting and then it's a couple days later, ideas pop into your head or questions pop into your head. Uh, so any feedback that you guys have tonight on this, I, I would, I would love to take the temperature of the room on, on certain things. Uh, but obviously, uh, and it goes without saying, for this or anything else. Uh, for anyone on the board or, or residents or anybody, um, you know, my door is always open. I'm accessible by email or phone or, or I'd, I'd love to meet people in persons. Uh, so there's a couple of events I'm looking at for twenty-twenty-three for the band shell. Uh, like I mentioned, um, the kickoff concert, uh, we were looking at a country band. However, um, the community uh, in our relationship with, with ninety-five Will Rock, uh, I would still love to see a rock show. I, I, I think. Uh, the community would embrace it, obviously, with the, the Royal Bliss concert that we had. We had. You know, ru- around, you know, we don't have a, obviously, a definite, uh, definitive number of how many people were at the Royal Bliss show, but it was somewhere around three thousand. Uh, obviously, that does well with bringing people into the community, and it also. Uh, performed well with people that live in the community. So I'd love to see us do another rock show if possible. Uh, collaborating with Will Rock uh, for something for the end of August. Um, the, the tough thing is finding that the right fit with something that Will Rock can support as a radio station, whether it be something they. They play or close to it, uh, that's also family-friendly and, y- you know, th- there's several different boxes to check. I- as far as what's gonna be the right fit for a rock station, and also that falls within a budget. Um, you know, I, I, I have here, you know, bringing in a band, you know, budgeting somewhere between ten to fifteen thousand dollars for a band. Um, uh, you know, one of the things we, y- y- you know, I've talked about with, with folks is, you know, what about a classic rock band or something like that? And I, I just, just by way of comparison and give you an idea of what bands cost, one, one of the, the bands I thought. Would do well, looking at classic rock bands that. Um, you know, play the, the county fair circuit or something like that. There's the band Thirty-Eight Special. They had some hits in the, the eighties, you know, and I, I, I think a band like that would do huge in Antioch. Uh, they're a fifty thousand dollar band, uh, so, um, you know, finding the, the band that we could afford. Uh, that would be the right fit. Again, family-friendly, there's some bands like, uh, when we were uh, choosing bands last year, when we picked Royal Bliss. There are some other bands that might have had a draw, but would not have been appropriate to, to have at the band shell. Uh, so, so again, finding the right fit um, is important. So that's one thing. Uh, that I, I would like to propose that we do this year is, is adding a, a second big concert like that, a, a rock show to kind of. Wrap up the, the, the concert season and, and do it on a Saturday night at the end of August. Uh, another opportunity that presented itself to us, uh, we were approached by the folks at WXRT. Um, to host, um, they, they want to do a seventies, eighties, nineties weekend. Uh, so that would be a Friday, Saturday, Sunday evening, July seventh, eighth and ninth. Which uh, coincides with a week that we're not doing a, a concert on Thursday night at the band shell. Um, they, they approached us to see if we would be interested in, in hosting three nights of WXRT concerts at the band shell. The total cost with this, with the radio station would be thirty thousand dollars. Uh, WXRT would take care of the bands. And I, I don't have specifics from them, and one thing I can, i- in. And when I bring this up, I don't have the specifics, and I, I would not recommend anything if the, if the bands or the ultimate product didn't fit what we were looking for. But conceptually, uh, WXRT, you know, has been around close to fifty years. Uh, they, you know, XRT concerts are always done well. It's, it's their bread and butter and, and I. I would assume, or I would, I would bank that this type of concert would align with everything else they've ever done. Uh, but the, the type of bands. They, it would, would be some, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be bringing in a, a top name band from the eighties or something like that. It would be more along the lines of tribute bands. Um, but I, I'm still, I'm, I'm eager to learn more from them. Um, I, uh, to, to see exactly how, how we could put this together and. And at the end of the day, have a product that's gonna bring people downtown. Uh, the thing that attracts me about this um, is. A, you know, doing something fun and different and having three nights of concerts. Uh, with, with a, with a radio station that has about eight hundred thousand listeners in the Chicago market a, a week. Uh, but also looking at opportunities for, for uh, to sell sponsorships, concession revenue. Uh, in, again, the, the visibility to our community and branding ourselves as a destination over the summer for concerts and something fun to do. Uh, especially if we do something at the beginning of the, the concert season with country. Uh, XRT in July, and if we do a rock show uh, at the end of August. Uh, but I wanted to bring this up mainly because uh, it's one thing if I, if I bump up a little bit from what we did last year. Uh, adding uh, the rock show adds more money, uh, than this XRT thing is significantly more money. Uh, and before I even look at it or talk to anybody, I, I wanted to, to gauge you guys, um, in, in. Get some feedback again, whether it's tonight or, you know, and the, 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 you know, and then, then in the near future, I would say that the XRT thing, um, they're looking at. Uh, they, they would need an answer sooner than later, just because this is something that if, if we take a pass on it, they want to shop it around to other venues. Uh, but I, I, I think the economic development aspect of, of branding the village and putting us on the map, you know, this aligns. Right with that, so I wanted to, to bring it to the board. Uh, along with that. Uh, like I've mentioned, uh, this year, we're, we're, we have an emphasis or, or a focus on not only putting on quality concerts. But looking at ways we could uh, help the village offset the costs and then also. Um, also maximize these events for, for the businesses in town. So one of the things I wanted to point out, um. You know, currently, um, when you look at revenue potential or areas of revenue, there's band shell beer sales. Uh, currently, beer sales are handled by the Antioch Moose Lodge. Uh, tomorrow, Mary has set up a meeting. We're gonna meet with the, the Moose Director. Uh, just to, you know, basically get their feel of the relationship and a, a better understanding on, on um. On the, the, the relationship and, and how the Moose has, has worked with the village. Um, I, I think as we, as we invest more money into activities at the band shell. Um, I, I think it would be appropriate, and, and again, I'd love your feedback on this. Um, I, I, at the very least, asking for some sort of potential revenue sharing with whoever has beer sales at the um. At the band shell right now, uh, that, that does not happen. Uh, another thing I've gotten some feedback on uh, over the winter. Was just about involving other nonprofits with, with beer sales, uh, or, or other involvement at activities at the band shell. Another option that we have is the village to take over beer sales. Um, that means we get all the revenue, but also all of a sudden, we're, we're now in the beer sales business. Uh, which, you know, worrying about manpower and that sort of thing. So it's, it's. Uh, there, there's pros and cons with that as well, but I, I think it's in, i- in the village's best interest to at least. Evaluate uh, beer sales uh, is, is far as a revenue potential. Uh, also sponsorship activities now that we have the Royal Bliss show that we did last year under our belt. Uh, we have success with a large concert that we could show success and, and, you know, we had a packed Seymour, um, or Skidmore, sorry. Um, i- in a packed band shell area that, that we could show potential sponsors. Uh, also, the, the radio partners or the media partners that we have, we could work to leverage those relationships for exposures for our sponsors. So if, if you are a title sponsor of events at the band shell, not only do you, do you get. Visibility at the band shell, but also with our media partners that are, that we're working with, with that. And finally, and, and one of the most critical components to, to what we're looking at is, is uh, right now, Michael and I are working together to, to put on. Workshops for local businesses, uh, to, to really make sure that we give. Our businesses in Antioch the tools and education and ideas and whatever we could do. To help them make these uh, events at the band shell and just events in, in the village, uh, like the, the Wine Walk is another example. How could they make these as profitable as possible? When we, we work to bring people into, into Antioch. Um, what can the businesses do and how could we help the businesses make that into a profitable event? So that, that's kind of our focus this year on this. So uh, that's what I've got for you tonight. Like I said, um, I would love. Any feedback that you guys have now. I'd love to take the temper- temperature of the room on any of these ideas. And also moving forward, as you guys have um, feedback, ideas, questions, anything, I'm available to you.
Alright, thank you, Jim. I'll go around, um. Before I go around, you know, I agree that as these events get bigger, uh, we should be taking care of our um, revenue sources. There's a reason. Uh, the Cubs sold beer for twelve dollars a, a can, and um, I like the way that the, the um, chamber does their event. The groups come in and man the beer tents and then um, keep all the tips for their organizations. So. Again, I think that may be a face thing that you're talking about with the Moose Lodge, because I, I also don't want to say. You know, here's twenty thousand dollars you're counting for next year's budget, it's gone. Um, but um, yeah, I'm glad you guys are on that path. Um, trustee Pierce.
I think this is all good for the village. I think it's a, a good thing that we pack people in and have them spending money. I'm really excited when I saw their whole workshops for the businesses to help them maximize on their sales, because that's. That's our whole purpose of bringing people into Antioch is to help our businesses and to make our community a destination. And um, it doesn't help us if the restaurants aren't prepared for uh, a huge concert. It doesn't help us if all. People walk downtown and all the lights are off and the sidewalks are rolled up. Um, so I'm, I'm excited about. Doing something for the community that's exciting and new, but I'm also excited that we're gonna try to work with our businesses to make them successful. And for help them be successful, because they're doing a lot of making themselves.
Trustee Mason?
Yeah, I'm gonna be the naysayer here. So when we do these events. So if this was a commercial entity coming to the village asking for permits, I'm sure we would be sitting there saying. Okay, you're gonna provide security, you're gonna buy bouncers, you're gonna, just as any. Prudent, even the insurance company asks bouncers and provide safety. So you're gonna have all these events. And you're gonna take uh, my protection, my police, off my streets. To put in these uh, overcrowded events. So I lose my police protection. Because you're not planning to. So I lose my police protection because you're not planning to bring in outside security to these events. So why should I give up someone patrolling my roads? Walmart Speedway? Why should I, which I just lost a dear friend with a head-on collision? Why should I give up uh, someone patrolling my subdivision? Because they're sitting there walking an event. I get it brings revenue, but shouldn't we shouldn't we plan the with the revenue to, uh, pay maybe part-time Lake County police officers or other officers to come in here? Because you can't give up secure, you can't give up our security when we got the problems going on in the towns right now. And just bring more people in the town and create more issues. It just, you can't put on more stress on the men and women that protect us now. It's just not fair to those folks.
And thank you, um, Jim Havert. You know, if you want to respond, we'll go around, um, looking about to say something and then.
Sure, it's just real quick. Trustee Mason, I I couldn't agree more with you. Um, the first person I I always talk to whenever we get ideas like this is, uh, Chief Gachau. Um, and and one of the things, uh, you know, we continue to work on is uh, making sure this doesn't overstress the the police department. I think that would be, um, if at some point, uh, the chief said that uh, it was a no-go from his perspective, I I I think that would be a red flag to me to to not move forward with anything, uh, in your your suggestion about using the the reserve deputies with Lake County Sheriff Department. I think that's a great one. Um, you know, and, uh, you know, from when when I look at this stuff, one of the things I could tell you, um, and a great example is when we went through the the planning, the with Royal Bliss. Uh, you know, we met with, uh, Chief Gachau and, uh, Commander Garcia and and Norm and everybody, Deputy Chief Johnson, uh, e- everybody at the police department to kind of go over a a plan, uh, for for safety and that sort of thing. And I I would say that's one of the most important things that that we could do. But thank you for your feedback.
Trustee Peterson.
Uh, Jim, I have a question for you. Uh, you said that the concert with WXRT that weekend, seventies, eighties, nineties, um, it would be thirty thousand. If the if the radio station was going to take uh, over the bands and and handle the bands, where's the thirty thousand? What's?
So that that would be, that would go basically to media exposure and and I don't have, I didn't get far enough in the dialogue with them to get specifics. Um, if it was something, I would say conceptually, if if the village felt that, or basically the village board felt that the exposure to their audience and putting on a an event might be worth it. Um, I I could get specifics to them as far as is putting a media value on 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 the exposure that we we could get. Um, just just, you know, off the top of my head and the the high level conversations I've had with them, uh, especially if we were able to bring in a sponsor or two. We we have, you know, several businesses in town that align well with XRT's demographic that that could help, first of all, offset the cost to the village. Uh, but secondly, um, you know, ba- ba- basically, whatever the village spends, justify it with the the media exposure. Um, I could put something like that together, uh, before we would commit to anything. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Yep.
Sounds like an expensive night for the Scarpelli family so far this year. Um, hey, Jim, did you also, uh, you say in passing that they would be broadcasting here all weekend if we did this?
Yeah, yeah. So they they would, they would do, uh, in addition to the concerts, they'd be broadcasting out here. It would be, we we would be all over XRT that weekend.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Luther.
Jim, on that that XRT weekend, would there be opportunities for our local businesses to act as sponsors that would get play on XRT as well?
Yeah, I so what we could do, you know, the sponsorships, we we could work out, you know, I I guess depending on the businesses for for bigger businesses, uh, let's say, let's, you know, for example, you're a car dealer and and you've got the the marketing budget to to be a title sponsor. And every time XRT mentions the the concerts in Antioch that weekend, your car dealership is mentioned. Um, we're able to do something like that. I I'm sure we could figure out something if you're a smaller business in town and don't quite have that bandwidth with with Mark with a marketing budget, but still get some exposure. Um, the relationship that we have with Odyssey Radio, uh, i- i- who owns WXRT is a really good one. So they're committed to to being flexible on on how we do that. That's one of the things that they they've stressed is, um, if this was something that we're able to 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 that that we're interested in moving forward with, they're they're pretty eager to to work pretty closely with us with putting together sponsorship packages, not only for the the bigger businesses, but, you know, being creative and flexible.
Then next question and my final one is, do we have an indication of how much revenues brought in at a standard Thursday night concert in beer sales versus like what was for the Royal Bliss event?
I I don't have that. I'm hoping I'm hoping to get a better handle on that tomorrow when we meet with the the folks at the Moose. Um, I
In my opinion, I think it's 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 important that there's a difference between those types of events.
Yeah, I saw.
From a Thursday night concert series, I have no problem, a local nonprofit serving the drinks, getting, uh, uh, getting a majority of those revenues from those events. But if we're going to put out the dollars for a large size or large scale event, like the XRT event or something like that, those are where we need to look at where the village recoups some of that cost. And and I'm guessing that the revenues for a large three-day event would probably exceed the thirty thousand dollar cost. I'm guessing they'll have more beer sales than that is is in my opinion, but I I could be wrong, but I'd love to see some estimates unnumbered.
Uh, if what what I could do is is, first of all, on on the XRT thing, if it was, i- if that was something that we wanted to move forward with, I, you know, th- th- they they put on more concerts than I have. Um, so they they could kind of give me a handle on what kind of audience they would expect, and then we could, you know, work out, you know, work out something to quantify what we would anticipate beer sales and that sort of thing being. Uh, but back on the regular Thursday nights, um, you know, we could, and again, it's it's up to you guys. Um, we could look at either compartmentalizing the bigger concerts, like we did last year with the kickoff concert. Beer, eh, everything was was handled separately from the regular Thursday night concerts. Or, you know, we could kind of lump everything together, uh, and have some of the revenue, even though it's obviously significantly smaller on a typical Thursday night than some of the bigger shows, uh, still kind of all go into the same pot.
Yeah, thank you. Trustee Warren.
I don't have anything else, though. It's pretty much covered. What it was be asking, so.
Trustee Domeniac.
Yeah, Jim, I really appreciate your enthusiasm and creativity and looking at new ways to bring people in. Um, and I'm excited to hear that you're going to meet with the Moose to, uh, have some discussion about how we might be able to capture some of that revenue to offset our expense. So looking forward to hearing how that goes.
Right. Thank you. Anybody else? We have a, uh, just a personal business. You have other business. Okay. Jim, good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, thank you for your work on that. All right, moving on. Other business.
Trustee Pierce, two items. One, as we know, several parts of town tonight are getting hammered with branches. I know about ten of them landed on top of my house and bounced into my yard and made a mess over there. I know Gary's is getting pounded. Anywhere that's got older trees is getting pounded right now. Um, so I think it's important that the Jim is online still, that we set up a couple of dates to have the tree grinding go around and grind up all the debris. And then we make the community aware of when those dates are.
Sure, okay.
Somehow, because I know we generally have to store and do it, but sometimes people are like, I didn't know they were going to do it. And when they're they're done already.
All right.
You know, so.
So there's a branch pick.
Sure.
Perfect. Is there another thing?
The other thing is this this weekend on the twenty-fifth, I believe the chief and his crowd is going to be doing a resource fair at the high school for, uh, opioid addiction and how to respond to it and how to handle it. I think it's very important that we as a board share that information with all our friends, get people there. I understand they're doing, uh, informational sessions, they're doing demonstrations. They're also, if I read correctly, providing Narcan, um, doses for for people who want them. And I don't care who you are. I mean, I don't care who you are. I've got it in my house. Uh, I gave some to my daughter just because she, I don't know what her friends all do. Um, I think it's important that every house has Narcan available in this day and age, because you don't know who's going to take the wrong pill because they don't know who's giving them what. So please share it with your friends, encourage people to go, encourage them to get the free Narcan. And 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 maybe that'll just help save one life. Here's the most important thing.
That's a good message. Um, any other business from anybody online? All right, um, the only other thing I would like to other business-wise, uh, Jim, um, you could leave. I've only had this happen once, and it's going to happen again tonight, is the power outages. Um, obviously, we do not control ComEd, but what is the procedure for people who are having trouble with power outage like Oakwood Knowles, I think, lost power tonight, so these other subdivisions, if we're having mass outages tonight, it's cold, um, you know, people will be calling us. We'll be obviously for for guidance. What is the instruction like for a trustee or I hear from, uh, residents about that?
History classes are only going to get longer and more as time goes on.
Not sure what that was, but, um, a power outages have to be reported to ComEd.
Good. So, okay. Is there like, uh, like, I guess, like a three one, is there a certain number that we should be directing people to call or is it just a ComEd regular number?
Uh,
It's owned them, or I'm sorry, not the owned them. It's under their electric bill?
Yeah, it we'll get some messaging. I I forget what it was.
I think Liberty Farms was out for a long time and people calling left and right. I didn't know it. Also, I know I have that again. Four days? Four days?
Yeah.
Three. Last year?
If you go to comed.com, they have a report and outage right under there.
Yeah, and we apologize. We have limited control over this portion of what happened, so.
Record that. Oakwood Knowles is back.
Okay, uh, Chief?
Twenty-eight hundred Edison one.
Okay.
Whatever call.
Okay.
You can text out to two six six three three.
Thank you. That's all I have. Anybody else? Uh, this is amazing thing. Um, all right, any requests for executive session? All right, uh, motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Motion, Trustee Bluthar.
Second.
I can, Trustee Peterson, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Six votes yes. Motion carries meeting adjourned nine thirty-six. Drive safely.